You're good, John.
I'd like to call the order of the Village of Marvin Parks Recreation and Greenways Board Meeting Session here on January 25th at 9:18 a.m.
Dan, can you hear us? As soon as I click that off.
It says mute, so now you gotta unmute.
No, it said, no, it said it stopped working again. Hey, can you hear us now?
Speakers are now set to, are now set to Amazon again. Set, go, click speaker, up there in speaker.
This one?
Mm-hmm.
It says this one.
That's the TV. If you use any, if you use the Real Tech one, that's the, that's the actual computer. So we can play, we can experiment and see if it'll work with any other ones. So yeah, we're just gonna call it on the phone.
Which one is it, this one?
Yeah.
Can you hear us? Dan?
No, it's off now. It seems when you switch one.
Hello?
Go, um...
He's muted. Dan, do you know you're muted? And F and F and F.
He can't hear us.
Maybe it's the, he could ask me here.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, probably it's recording. Cause John's trying to call, we need to order.
Someone go ahead, someone can go ahead and call them.
Wait, can you hear us?
Yes, Alex.
Okay, when I hold it up, it works. Dan, can you still hear us? Dan, can you still hear us?
Yeah, I'm gonna get down again. I can get a lot of the, uh, a lot of this calling on the phone.
It's the cord. When I hold it up in the air, it works. When I sit it down, it's a different cord.
That's the cord that came with it, so I don't know.
It's a thing, it is a, it's a micro, it's a whatever cord.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have extra cords for that.
I think that one is in my car.
What's his thing called?
What's this thing called? Micro U, what's this thing called? People, techy people?
Micro U.
Gretchen's got one, hold on, hold on.
USB.
I mean, are we replacing all this stuff?
Nah, we're just gonna take it with us.
Whoa, 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 Mr. Lippy, who invited you to the table?
Um, I did, cause I, um...
Okay, Gretchen has one, try that, try that. Oh, Lord.
We don't have any other guests.
Remember, you two have coffee with councilman.
Dan, can you hear us?
You have coffee council.
Hello, can you hear us? You're muted.
Did the speakers change here?
Okay, speaker has changed to Amazon, we're gonna hear nothing.
Okay, hang on. I feel like he's talking, or he's trying to.
Gretchen, you gonna come when we start?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, there you go. I can hear you guys, yeah.
Okay, hang on one second. Now, can you still hear us?
Yes, I can.
Hallelujah, alright. Don't touch anything.
We're that one.
Don't, don't, yeah, give it to Gretchen, have her, um, ask her to do one.
It's a micro, I got it, I got it.
I'll get a line.
I know, I'll look you guys up.
No, no, we, we need to...
You're able to proceed, I think, and we just proceed, baby.
We're good, you can hear us then, right?
Yeah, it's not the cord.
It's the signal.
It ain't that either. It's, it's...
Just call them on the phone, guys.
Who has your number? That means, we took the, we took the thing out.
We took the junction box out. It's, it's the, the whole microphone is just junk, so we're gonna get another one. I mean, it's an Amazon microphone, um...
Wait, tell them we gotta move on.
Yeah, someone call him on the phone.
I got it.
Alright, so are we called to order?
Yes, we're, yes, so you need to move, you need to adopt the agenda.
The, uh...
Hey, Dan, how you doing, boy?
I do determine that we do have a forum with myself, Bob Nonna Camp. Dan Wilson, uh, is participating remotely. And our council liaison is here, Tim Vanenburg, as well as Mayor Joe Dino and Jamie Line. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Uh, any questions or anything about the agenda, changes requested? Do I hear a motion on the table to adopt the agenda as it is written?
So...
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is Public Facilities Managers Update.
Yeah, previous minutes.
Oh, uh, we do have adoption of previous minutes, which are from our January 4th meeting, 2022. These were provided in our package. Any questions or requested changes to those minutes? Alright, do I hear a motion on the table to adopt the January 1st, 2022 meeting minutes as they are written?
So...
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and moving on to the next item B is Public Facilities Managers Update. Nothing in there, but...
Right.
Anything from you, Derek?
No, we'll just move on then.
Okay, we'll move on to item number C, which is Unfinished Business. It'll be item number one is a discussion of 2022 Marvin Day Celebration on Saturday, May 21st, 2022. So Derek, there's a couple items there listed, and starting with our review of action items.
Alright, so we're gonna go through our packets like usual, and then we'll dive into some of the new materials that are in front of you. If you will flip to the fourth page, the, uh, the schedule.
You don't have any of that, Bob?
Nope.
You should, Gretchen put it out enough times, should've put it out enough times.
You can actually...
Yes, the packet there.
Is this it?
Yeah.
Okay, which page are we going to, Derek?
Thank you, Gretchen.
The fourth page, um, the colorful sheet that says tentative holiday schedule?
Yep.
Alright, so first column, the elementary school, we're gonna have the health fair and the blood drive. Um, you'll see when we get to the health fair sheet, I've taken off walkathon. Um, I'm gonna change that to guided trail runs. I'm gonna have like a, a display at the health fair with the different trails and amenities that we have in town. Um, and I'm gonna try to set up some different guides to lead some runs, like a one mile, a two mile, and then maybe like a long run. Um, and just give people an opportunity to be exposed to them if they've never seen them before. Um, so that's seven to 10 at the elementary school. Um, at the park grounds, um, Christine is gonna do two sets of garden, or garden tours, nature walks. Um, one at nine, one at 10, and then again at two and three. And then we've got the disc golf clinic from 12 to 2.
Wait, can I ask a question? Are you saying right here, seven to 10 at the elementary school, we're adding trail runs?
Yes.
It doesn't say it on my calendar.
I know, it's not on there. I'm, I'm, it's still in the works.
Oh, but it's gonna be at the elementary school?
That says two.
Yes.
That is probably the meeting, that's the meeting place.
Huh?
That'd be the meeting place.
Okay.
Your garden tours are off here. So Derek, on the...
I'm sorry, it is nine to 11, Joe.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there'll probably be one that starts at nine and one that starts at 10?
Correct.
Yep.
Um...
So Derek, on the, on the, um, trail tour runs? What incentive do we have for people to come out other than just to see the trails?
A lot of times people do it for t-shirts.
Right, but I'm just saying...
Well, it's a, I mean, it's a health fair, right? We're gonna hopefully have a blood drive. I mean, you have, you have ideas?
No, I...
Cause I get it, I mean, we need, we need an incentive for people to, to wanna show up and participate.
Yeah, is, um... I thought in the beginning, and maybe I misunderstood, that we were gonna do some type of like walkathon, or 5K, or two and a half K. I'm not a runner, obviously, but to give people the incentive to, to, there's an event. I don't know if you call it a health fair. I'm, I don't know how many people will show up for it, and I'm just throwing it out there.
So the one thing we were thinking, like, when we had our internal meeting, like, I've been to a lot of races, and long races, short races. And the problem is, it takes a lot of volunteers and a lot of staff to do a 5K. I mean, people will come out for a 5K, but to do a 5K, we're gonna have to like mark the road, have a map, like a start and finish line. Water setup, medical, um, start and stop timers. Like, a lot of people bring in a company to run those, because I don't think we're big enough to run the event ourselves.
Yeah.
People love 5Ks and love getting a t-shirt and a medal, but we would either need to pay for a company to come in to host it, to help us. Um, I mean, I, I love, well, I don't love a 5K, I mean, like, like listening to music and going to it, but I'm not doing it.
Yeah.
Um, but people love to come out for a 5K.
Yeah.
I don't, I wouldn't come out for a walkathon, but I'd come out for like a 5K, but we can't...
And that's a very valid point. I'm just trying to, is there something between a 5K and a walkathon that, that incentivizes people to come out? I mean, if I'm a runner, but I, and I like, and maybe it is a health fair, I'm not, I'm not shooting it down. I'm just trying to let, let's, let's chew on it now, as opposed to just saying, okay, yeah, let's just do this, and then in the morning of, you got a blood mobile there with five people showing up, and there's people going, well...
Well, I think this comes back down to the earlier conversation about how many activities do we want? And which of those activities are gonna draw people to Marvin and build a Marvin Day? And at least in my opinion, a 5K was a terrific idea. And it exposed people to our trail system, it exposed, brought people into Marvin, we could move them over to the park, we could do a lot of things. And just off the top, and I'm, I just don't think taking people to the park under the auspices of a health day to go run a couple trails is gonna get it done. And I understand the manpower issue, I've understood that for quite, quite some time now. But I think we're getting ready to illuminate an activity that's gonna be important in building Marvin Day, is what I think.
We can maybe get a quote from, I'm trying to think, I've seen the one, it's like, ah, they like bring the blow up things that, and the timers on them. We can maybe see how much it is. I mean, personally, I don't think you're gonna get a lot of people out for a walkathon. I mean, I'm not waking up at 7:00 a.m. when I'm gonna spend all day, I'm not gonna go to a walkathon. I mean, I am, because I have to be there, but...
I, I agree a hundred percent, and I don't mean to jump in on this, but I, I will tell you, you don't have to get as many people as you think, because my wife runs five miles every day, and she runs it through the neighborhoods. So you could use the sidewalks and everything, there's just certain areas that you would need to block off. Also, Bob, uh, Mark Ali said when he spoke with Coles. Coles is adamant about being very involved in this and providing volunteers. That's part of their whole thing with their employees, plus I'll speak later about the car show and the volunteers that we're gonna get with that. But I don't think you need to, cause my wife runs five miles every day. She does it all through neighborhoods. It could potentially start at Marvin Elementary, work your way through some of the neighborhoods, which include Marvin Creek, and, you know, so, so you're just in one neighborhood. But if you're, if you're telling me to come out for a health fair, I'm not coming. There's just no way. Uh, you're gonna get a lot of people, you put out there, hey, we're having a 5K, run, walk, do what you want, ride your bike? You're gonna get a whole different...
So do the companies that like do the timer and set up the stuff and do all that stuff, do they help map it out? I would kind of assume they would.
Alright, well, hold on once, I don't mean to interrupt you, apologies, but this was kind of my, my thing, right? The health fair, we decided a long time ago we weren't doing a 5K, right? So then...
Yeah, we had talked about it being more of a family fun run.
You still wanna have a walkathon to pull people in, then we can do that. We can promote, you know, some sort of trail walk. That's, that's what I'm trying to stick with, with, you know, guided trail runs and expose people to the trails. But I don't think we can logistically, from a staff standpoint, pull off a 5K. And we already decided we weren't gonna do that, so we can't keep going back and throwing it back on the schedule. I do agree that we need something to draw people in to the health fair, whether it's a band, or a food truck, or a booster thon, you know, fun run of some sorts, um, blowups, I, I mean, I'm open to whatever.
I, I, I think where we were heading, which was away from the formality of the 5K, because of some of the reasons we discussed, but more towards a family fun run, you know, that had a coffee and pastries available there, along with the health fair and, and the blood drive. Now, can we do some things to perhaps pull more people and gather more interest in the fun run? We, we very likely can come up with some additional ideas for that, you know, just to, to get the people there. But like Joe said, I think there's tons of people that get out to exercise every morning anyway. If you just capture a certain amount of those folks that are, that are just gonna try to, you know, move it over there to where we're having the event. You know, that, that, that'd be a good thing, I think, but...
Well, not every event is gonna target every person.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
So...
Well, what I was, what I was gonna say was, if there's a company out there that can, and I'm not saying for a 5K, that they can kind of help us try to map out something, like different, like fun run, trail stuff, and it may not be that we need a company, but that, but like a 5K could be what we add on to for the next year. As we, cause we've always said, you know, we don't wanna get too big for our britches, um, this year. So I think if we, if there's a company out there, or if we can do it ourselves, I know Dan was trying to, I know Dan was trying to look at, you know, figuring out like some, some routes to get like, you know, a mile or two miles, like through the trails and through stuff to do, that we can easily set up some, you know, directional signage to help, you know, direct people where to go and how to do a loop. But I, I mean, we, I mean, we talked about this months ago, that a 5K at this point is not realistic, unfortunately, I don't think.
But there's gotta be something between a 5K and, and a health fair.
I agree, but...
And, and, and I, as well, and I think some of that, and I, and I, Derek, I totally agree with you. And Derek, if I'm in your shoes, I'm, I'm doing the same thing. But I've heard kind of rumblings that we're, we're, we're just trying to back everything down because of sponsorship money. I, I've got a, I've got a platinum sponsor. I'm hoping to get another one, and hoping to fill the sheet, sheet up. If we're gonna minimize everything, then let's just get a couple food trucks and throw them at the high school, do something like that. I, I don't wanna go all out, but I don't wanna go here. There's something here. And if I'm looking, if I see the, if I see the, the list of things that are out there, and I go, I'm not going to that, I'm not into cars. I got a concert, I got a concert, and there's, and there's a food truck, and there's, again, I'm not in it for everybody. But it's gotta be some, there's gotta be a hook in there somewhere that says, I'm gonna get up early in the morning, I'm gonna get my family up and whatever, and I'm gonna go to this. And if we need to look at $2,500 to pay for somebody to come in and map a trail, and put blow up stuff up, and promote it as a fun run, then I just, I'm just throwing it out there, because we wanted to make, we want to at least make it look as though we put effort into investing in this to be something special, other than...
How about I just see if I can get a quote to see if it's even feasible, and like to have a company come in? I don't think, when you said Coles having volunteers, like, they didn't show up for our last event, and they said that they were sending volunteers, and none of them came. So I'm a little worried about, um, the national night out.
Coles or public?
Coles. So they usually are the ones that like serve the food and do all of that there, and they didn't send any of their volunteers. So we ended up serving and cooking, cooked.
Um, I think that's a good idea. Let's at least find out, and, and just be like, for you guys just to run it. Set it up, get us all the materials, basically from start to finish, you guys set it up, figure it out, and it's just in Marvin.
See the cost of how much it is.
Derek, I'm not shooting, by no means would I shoot, kind of shoot holes and, or shoot down what you're, what you're doing. Cause if I were you, I'd probably be doing the same thing. I just let, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna fix this end of it, that we'll have money and funds to do some of this stuff. I don't wanna shortchange it. And I, and I think I told Jamie, I know I told Kim, I'll title sponsor myself, to make this a success. I'm not gonna let this fall down because of a couple thousand dollars. So I heard that, you know, PRG was just like, well, we're getting ahead of our skis, we don't have any sponsors, and it's gonna fall. It is not gonna, I promise you, as far as I'm concerned, it will not fall back on PRG.
One, one thing, um, we talk about a hook for that, something between a 5K. What about, um, you know, one of the big hooks is you always get the kids interested, then the parents have to come along. Uh, one of these color run things that you see, that they do with the high schools, stuff like that.
Great idea.
Where it's much more minimized than a formal 5K, but they go through this thing where they get, you know, all sorts of color put on them and stuff like that. They were, it, just, just an idea of something that I've heard of that...
Great idea.
You know, has them in the middle.
Cause there's your, your kids.
You might get the kids more interested, oh, there's a color run, let's go do this, mom, dad. They're just happy the kids wanna get out of the house and, you know, run half a mile.
To your point about, I, I have a sponsor that I just kind of happened, stance happened, I was getting a massage, and it turns out that the people that were, that own this thing, our sports clinic, their thing, their, when I told them, cause I thought we were having one, they got, can we set up a tent? That's exactly what we can do. We can check within, Carolina Sports, we can check with them.
Is that who it was? Ann?
Yes.
That's where I go.
Okay.
She's amazing.
Yeah, but the, what I was saying is, the owner she introduced me to, is, they were all in, cause they, they were asking if they could set up a tent.
They're on our list of contacts, so that's good.
Yeah, it's already done.
And they stretch people, and they...
They do all of that, and chiropractors, all that, so they, they have that. But then, I, I think we're, I'm going with this as far as volunteers is, when this car thing comes in, as it's tied into the band, it's all the kids from the high school, which bring the kids more in, cause you, you promote it that way. But you, you require the band members to be volunteers. There's gotta be at least 40 or 50, I think, band members coming back, that we just assign roles for them. So I will be speaking to them on Thursday, the 3rd, at a board meeting at the band, but I'll explain that later. But to your point about that, you do have to bring the kids in. And I don't think, no offense, I don't think there's any runners here. So in, in this group, there, there's, there's no runners, but we're saying that...
There's a lot, though.
But there's a ton of runners in Marvin, and all it is, and maybe it's just a phone call to this, this clinic, the sports clinic, saying...
Actually, I'm friends with them, so...
Who you use to set the, who have you used before? And then you, you go to that and see if you can do, but it doesn't have to be a run, it could be a thing, but you can incorporate the trails, too. The trail that comes into here, that goes into this neighborhood, that goes over to the high school, that goes part of Marvin Creek into Marvin, and then some of the trails back over it, uh, thing, you can, you can map out if we have to.
I'll reach out to Ally, that's who you're talking about? Ally and Josh, is that, okay, so...
Thanks for the honors.
Um, they, especially at other running events around town, and they will, that's a great advertisement afterwards. They offer the Norma Tech boots, they set up their chairs, they have stretching, they have, and they bring like their whole team, and they have tables and all the banners, because we, when we did the, um, there was an event at the barn, and they hosted it, and it was really, really good.
And as Jamie is saying, he's not worried about the money, I'm not worried about the volunteers, cause I know I got a good group of kids that we're gonna have to, because I know what we did last time for the fundraising event for the car show.
Yeah.
I know what we did, and it's, it's, it's about getting parent involved, which has always been an issue. But getting those kids in, they're sometimes required to do that for the following...
I just saw a kid write on Facebook, too, where can I get more service hours this week? So I know some of these teens need service hours, so...
I think, I think we might be careful of spending too much time on each individual thing, but I think we've got some direction there.
I'll call some race event places and kind of get an idea of how much it would cost. And to answer your question, to get kids involved, like a lot of the races I've been to, they've done 5Ks and 1Ks, like for, the kids would do the 1K, while the parents are doing the 5K, or like you kind of split up, like one parent do the 5K, one parent does the 1K with the kid. And everyone loves a fun t-shirt or a medal afterwards, and they're not that expensive. But those race companies do a good job, and there's a few people in my neighborhood that have hosted them themselves, too. So I'll just get a quick quote, see if we can do it, and get that info back.
Try to have that back to us by next Tuesday when we have our regular meeting.
That sounds good. Yep. And then can we, otherwise, if we're doing guided trail or something else, if we have to switch, then we can switch to that easily. Okay?
Guided trail...
Runs, walks?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I wouldn't come out for guided trail run, so I get it. I think we are just worried as a staff level, putting on a 5K ourselves.
And, 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 and you guys are on top of that, I mean, you've thought of that, and that's, that's the help, so it's combined effort.
But if we have the money to bring in someone to run, I think that'll bring a lot out.
And that's the, that's the kickoff thing, and there's gonna be a lot of people that don't show up for that, but the people that do, that, that, that's a, that's a big, that's an exciting thing. And I, I do believe somewhere in this, Joe Council is there to do a kickoff, I mean, some type of kickoff. Whether it's Pledge of Allegiance, whether it's a cannon, whether it's just something that says, okay, we're kicking off Marvin Day. Bam, and here we go, we'll get ready for the 1K.
Well, that event company plays loud music, then you talk, they play the National Anthem, and then they have the sound, and everyone runs. But then you could say like, you're the mayor, like, welcome to Marvin Day, like, we're gonna kick off the day.
Take your mark.
Get set.
I got that radio voice.
Alright, got an MC, too. Okay.
Dan, can you still hear us?
He's on the phone, I think.
Yeah, no, I can hear you fine.
Alright, good stuff. Alright, next page.
Not unless anything's changed, somewhat, but...
Blood drive.
Unless any financials have changed.
Any update there?
Um, the Red Cross is booked through the whole summer, so they are not available, I'm looking for alternatives for a blood drive. And have reached out. The blood, the Red Cross, so this is one thing, if the buses that come can park outside, if you get somebody to set up the tables, you need like quite a bit of space, you need medical, you need an area to be able to wash hands, so we'd have to be inside the school.
I thought we were gonna be inside the school.
I just mean like for the blood drive, like, we have to have a certain amount of space for them to have social distancing and access to water and sanitary areas.
I thought they were gonna be in the gym.
The blood drive?
Yeah.
I wasn't planning on that.
No, it was gonna be the...
Planning on, you know, having the bus.
Oh, so the buses are booked.
So I thought we were gonna be in the gym.
So book them for next year.
Yeah.
I mean...
Well, OneBlood, did you call, did you call OneBlood?
Yeah, contacted, I'm waiting. Okay, so...
So that, that's out, then.
The Red Cross is out, but, um...
There's the other community one.
The other, and I'm gonna see if there's anywhere else that will do it.
The only thing I, I could suggest, if you're having hard time, cause I don't know where you go for a blood drive that's a legit company, but maybe there's a place out there, switch it to a food drive, and take, big food, where everyone brings food to the thing, where we cart it off to thing. This way it gets people involved again for, I mean, as an alternative to a blood drive.
Okay, that's a good idea. Does anybody else have any other ideas if that doesn't work out?
I was just wondering, you know, if, if you approach somebody like Novant or something like that, I think we've had... I think we've had Novant, and they've got an emergency center right down there. They might have some ideas about the Health Expo and wanting to provide some information there, as well as potentially having a connection to blood drives, cause they are the ones that need it. So maybe just that, reach out to Novant, they probably have a public relations person, um, to see what, you know, what they do for similar type of events, you know, things like that.
Need phlebotomists, to draw your blood, so...
Okay.
Alright, Disc Golf Clinic will take place at the park, uh, 12 to 2. And we're gonna do a home line registration, just to know how many people we have, probably limited to 50 participants. If we start to fill up, we can do like two clinics, you know, and give away logoed discs.
Those are good, by the way.
Thanks. Uh, nature walks, um, again... Again, I've talked with Christine, and she's gonna do these out of the cottage garden. At ten, nine, ten, two, and three. And we're gonna do an online registration to limit it to fifteen people per walk. Garden tours, Bob, can you clean? Can we provide enough information to?
We've got, it's already, yeah, we've got every, we've got currently, uh, let's see, one, two, three. We're gonna have four locations for the garden tour. They're already locked up. The thing, the thing obviously I need to know and the people participating, both in the garden tour and the art tour is, you know, when are the deadlines for bios? When are we having the map designed? You know, point of sale in terms of balloons, banners, how are we promoting this? You know, that's the question everybody's got. One comment I'd like to make is that Marvin is blessed. We have some unbelievable artists in this town. It is, uh, people are gonna be pretty darn excited when they go out on this tour. It's, uh, it's pretty darn good.
I'm excited about it.
Alright, so you're gonna put the bios.
I'd like to incorporate the bio with the map.
Yeah.
So, if, if Lamath Marshall is, she does ceramics in Park. And then we have another lady, Verna, Verna Witt, who does, uh, ceramic and pocketbooks, af clay and so on and so forth, and then Tom Riser, I think everybody knows Tom.
And, and I would reach out to them, because a lot of them, for the things they do, they already have their bios.
Well, I've got their bios.
Okay.
Well, the bios are done, I've got everything complete.
You just wanna, I would just go ahead and send it to Jamie. Send all the bios to Jamie so that they can start working on incorporating that into the map.
Okay.
Cause, cause they're working with a graphic designer now.
Yeah, if you guys just wanna start sending stuff to Derek and I, that would probably be the best.
Ooh, and then what deadline is that?
ASAP.
Yeah.
Now.
Right now? I'd say by, I'd say by next Tuesday, and then you guys can, you know.
One quick question about that, as, as you're putting together kind of marketing collateral and, and, and functional stuff like maps for the tours and stuff like that. Are, are you designing them as each individual thing kind of on its own? That could be put in a PDF workbook electronically? Or is it one thing for the whole event with, with all the different things in it?
Derek, do you wanna answer that?
I missed the question, sorry.
Uh, as you, as you're working with this graphic designer, is your intent to have kind of individual sheets for each of the different types of events? Describing those and so forth? Or is it one kind of program for the whole day? That, that kind of, you know, has everything kinda tied together?
We're gonna have a program of all the day's events.
Like a calendar of events?
Yeah, we're definitely gonna have that.
Descriptions, okay. And then the individual thing?
Yeah.
But we, okay, I don't wanna get ahead of, and I don't wanna get in the weeds either, but.
No, we need to be in the weeds now.
Okay, well, let's get in the weeds here, because. Are we gonna have a trifold pamphlet map to, to put out at retail locations? Is that what we're doing?
I don't know if it's gonna be.
That's what I'm thinking, calendar of events, map of where the events are.
Yeah, it's freestanding, you know, garden art tour.
Yes.
These are their hours, ten to two, here are the locations, here are the bios, these are the things you wanna do. And it's, and then we find retail outlets, we find wherever to distribute all this. Is that what we're doing?
Mm-hmm. So there's gonna, I don't know if it's gonna be tri-fold, but there will be a map of like the garden tour and the, and the art tour. And that will have, there will also be, there will also be a map of where everything is throughout the day.
So will that be two separate pieces?
I think so.
Yeah, I, I, I would think so.
Yeah, I would too.
Yeah, I think you wanna have one piece that has a calendar of events.
With like a map on the backside.
Where those events occur, just, yeah.
Generalities, yes.
With, with, with brief details, that's really a two pager, front and back, you know? And then, and then you get into each of the individual events, creating their own thing.
If they need one, some of them may not need one. The show will probably need one, I, I don't think the.
And I asked that question only because some of us could start even working on the individual event ones ourselves.
Yeah, do we have a section on this specifically, or do you wanna do it with each event?
I think there'd be marketing.
I would do it with the marketing.
Okay, so let's just wait and go on to the next page and then we'll come back to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Derek?
Nope, no questions.
Okay, I'm gonna ask it anyway.
Is it about what page are we on?
No, no, I just wanna make sure that I can communicate to the people I'm working with. I've told everybody it's two, from ten to four, or ten to two, pardon me. Is that correct?
The.
I mean, that's your, your thing, what time you want it to be?
Well, I need the barn, uh, because we need electrical hookups for Kat Jackson.
Well.
Because she's gonna be doing a demonstration.
Alright, so that's a whole separate argument.
Discussion?
Discussion.
You need to go right to arguing.
Well.
I'm not arguing with anybody about it, I just don't have the answer for that yet. Ever, both people were, one was out of town last week.
We're on garden tours.
Okay.
We're on garden tours.
So we're not doing art yet?
Not yet.
Arts next page.
Art tours next.
Art tours are next.
Are we done with garden tours?
Are we done, garden tours, you got all that?
I guess, I think.
On our, on our tours.
On garden tours, we are going to order, to answer your question, banners or signs of some sort to post. I think we need like, you mean like at each location? At each location, a sign in front of them, there'll be a list, so that does kinda answer.
Can we add balloons to that?
Sure.
Each site will have, um, a real estate sign.
Perfect, and balloons.
Balloons.
Okay.
Balloons too?
Yeah, I like balloons.
Yeah, no, balloons we did for the last garden tour and they worked well.
It helps.
Well, it's visually, yeah, it's got some height to it, where the sign's down on the ground.
That's a great idea.
And then they think that it's just a house for sale.
Yes.
Not a stop.
Okay, got it?
Got it.
So everybody's locked load on the garden, I mean, on the art tour.
Okay, so now we're back to.
But the only, and I wanna, we're, if we, if we do not have access to the barn, then I will lose some artists.
Okay.
So, my list can change, just to let you know.
Alright, let's just go to the schedule then. Uh, Kim, you got the four.
Okay, so well, so I reached out to the Raptor Center. So the originally, I had originally talked to the Raptor Center. They wanted a forty five, so they want, um, from ten thirty to eleven thirty at the barn. With a forty-five minute program. So, I would say, and, and they want a maximum of fifty people. So basically gonna be first come, first served, they want two six foot tables. They want no loud music during their programming. Because they're gonna have animals there and they don't wanna upset them. So I would say like if your people wanna set up, Bob, they just can't do anything from ten thirty to eleven thirty. Like I think, I think fifty, uh, how many, how many, how many people did, how many chairs did you guys set up for the, the bats?
Normally we set up thirty-five to forty.
Okay, so there was lots of room on the backside. Like, I'm, I'm thinking about how we, how you guys set it up for bats.
Right.
I'm thinking the same thing, you set it up that way for the Raptor Center, you set up fifty chairs. And then whoever needs plugs, like I kinda feel like you could have those back two corners, right?
Right.
And they can go ahead and set up and they just won't be able to do anything for the, the program time. And they can share. I would say they would need to set up earlier. Yeah. So not to disrupt the.
Well, they're, they would set up early anyway, right?
Yeah, they're gonna set up early, but I need a setup time.
Okay, so what?
In a completion time.
Hold on.
Set up here for the completion.
Yeah, but hold on, but hold on, would that work?
Well, I need to get up with them, I mean, I think it will.
Okay.
But their experience, my experience with a lot of this is late, you know, if the afternoon goes on, crowds dwindle.
Yeah.
You know, it's just always the case. So, you know, from ten thirty to eleven thirty, that you're talking about, it's really prime time. So let me just check, I think if they have the barn and they can set up, I think they'll be, I think they'll be okay.
Okay, and again, so I've reached out to the Raptor Center, the two people that I've been talking with, one was out of town last week, one's out of town this week. I'm supposed to schedule a call at the beginning of next week, before sometime next week. So as soon as I talk to them, I can ask them if they can kinda shift their times around, but this, this was.
What do they need the electric for, Bob?
Pottery wheel.
If you were to have a generator down near the picnic shelter.
They don't wanna go down there?
No, okay.
But, but can, but can they not, because if, if, if we've got someone there, can they not come and set up, I mean, like really early?
Sure.
And be, and be set?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And then they can walk away, relax, go take it easy, go do something, and while they're, while the Raptors thing's going on, and then roll back.
But here's my, but here's my question. They're only gonna need, we're gonna have, let me make sure before I make a comment, we got one, two, three. We've got three artists that would like to be in the barn. Each occupying a space of eight to ten feet. I mean, we're talking thirty feet max for what they wanna do over at the far end of the barn.
Right.
There's not, there're not gonna be any music whatsoever.
Right.
They're just people, they're gonna walk up, look at their art, hopefully maybe buy some of their wares. So that's part of the deal. I don't see that at least bit disruptive to what goes on with the Raptor Center.
I don't think it is.
I don't understand why those two events can't go on concurrently.
Yeah, I think.
In fact, I think the more people you get into the barn and create more interest, people go, wow, there was a great crowd, were you at the barn? Versus, well, there were only twenty-five people at the barn.
And actually, we can move, like at our last event, we moved those picnic tables, and then we had the overhang on the side of the barn, and we have that outdoor area too. But I think they can go on at the same time, we just have to say like, no music, no.
None of the.
But here's the thing, they're doing a presentation, like the Raptor Center's doing a presentation, they don't want people in the back of the room carrying on conversations. Cause I mean, voices are gonna carry, like.
You remember at like the tree lighting where like they were singing, the choir was singing? And like there was still like, but people were still respectful of what was going on, but people were still like mingling or they stepped outside.
But that's like them like singing in the background, like they're doing a presentation to a group of people. It would be like the bats, and then you've got like twenty-five people in the back of the room carrying on a conversation and people can't hear.
You could.
It is literally like the, um, town hall that you guys couldn't hear at, cause there were kids outside running around. And that's what I don't wanna have happen.
If you had the barn, how many artists would you have?
Couldn't you just put them on the shelter outside?
There's only gonna be three artists. And like I said, it'll take up a maximum of thirty feet.
I don't think it's a space, I don't think it's a space issue, I think it's just during the presentation time.
Yeah, not for three.
But I gotta, I gotta think the Raptor folks would wanna be somewhat outside, so if you close that one door and it had, and then, like if this is the barn, and this is where the backside is, and you put someone here, here, and here, they got plenty of room. And then everything outside here is the Raptor Center stuff in the presentation.
They, we've had them there before and they've wanted inside, because their, their, some of their animals can't stay in the sun very long and stuff like that.
I, I'm just, this is, this is what they told me, I am trying to get some clarification, and as soon as I get clarification, I will let everybody know. I will even ask if we, if the Raptor Center can go down to the picnic shelter. I'm, I'm fine asking with that.
Well, if there's only three artists, they could also be set up out, we can have power outside, right, for a pottery wheel?
Yeah. Well, the pottery wheel's ten, but she, Kat's trying to get the pottery wheel from this Carolina pottery, whatever. Let me, is, the Raptor Center thing's a big thing, and we're lucky to have it and it's gonna draw a lot of people. Let me get up with these ladies and just let them know that, hey, we, can I tell them that they've got the barn? But from ten thirty to eleven thirty, kinda put this on hold.
Not even, just for forty-five minutes?
Yeah, put it on hold.
Just put it on hold.
And then you can crank right back up.
Yeah.
But you've got the barn, you can put up your display.
Take a break.
Because a lot of these people have.
That'll actually bring more people in for them to some degree.
Let me do that.
But I mean, I, you talk to them.
No, your point's.
But you talk to them, see how they feel about that, I can, and if they're fine with it, then I'm not even gonna have to worry about talking to the Raptor Center. If they're not, I'm happy to say, hey, can we do it from nine, ten to eleven? And then they can start up at eleven and have like the people there from, you know, whatever. So, talk to them, see how, see if they're okay with that, if they're not, then then I'll talk to the Raptor Center.
Let me make sure I clear this way.
Okay.
Their presentation's roughly about forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes.
But they're gonna be there beyond forty-five.
They're gonna be, they, they wanna set up, they wanna booth out, they'll, they'll probably, they'll probably keep their booth like inside.
Right.
Cause they wanna, they've got all kinds of displays and stuff that they can leave up, but the, the talking presentation part is forty-five minutes.
And they however will be there how long?
Probably all day.
That's super.
I think to keep that time, because if people are going to the, if we have a 5K.
And then they come.
I think we need to keep that at that time to make sure.
And, and again, hopefully there's gonna be a release that afternoon around four. So they, so they are planning on being there all day, they've got games that they can play with kids, they've got all kinds of displays they're gonna set up. But the speaking presentation is forty-five minutes.
So Derek, if, if we said to the artists, it's eleven to three instead of ten to two. To try to accommodate the Raptor Center. Would there be other things going on at the park at three?
Well, there's disc golf.
Disc golf clinic at twelve to two.
The walking, the garden tour, I mean, the, the, the nature walk, garden tour.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of an audience.
Yeah.
You know, they're gonna set up their stuff and they're gonna be out there and obviously we wanna be successful, so there's a year or two on this. So we want, you know, the participation.
I mean, I would say let them set up as early as, what time's the park gonna be open, Derek? Eight, is that normal?
No, no, we'll open it earlier.
Okay, so I would say they can come and set up at eight o'clock.
Okay.
And we can, and if they wanna start letting people like.
They can set up the night before.
Yeah, and it'll be locked, and they can, they can come at whatever point in the morning and start, you know, having people come. Ask during the presentation that everybody stops what they're doing and put their attention towards the Raptor Center. And then we're gonna have food trucks or a food truck for lunch and ice cream. That's gonna bring people, or people that are there playing disc golf, people there with their kids, seeing that they're gonna be eating, walking around. And we have the space outside under the overhang, half of the barn, I think it will be fine. Um, but I see what you're saying, they don't wanna be in the middle of the afternoon where everyone's like, that's when they go home and.
Right.
So if they set up early, they just need to stop for forty-five minutes while.
Well, I think most of them wanna set up in the morning, Derek.
Yeah.
Based on comments.
Well, that's best.
So I could say set up between eight and nine.
Four, seven, and eight? I would say, I would say six to eight AM for setup.
They could start at eight, you know?
Six to eight, go eight to ten, and then.
Yeah, I mean, the Raptor Center will probably get there, again, I'm not sure what time they wanna come set up, but, um. Yeah, I would do that, so it's all set up and in place, and then we're not pushing.
So, and then their hours will remain ten to two, but there's gonna be a period of time for forty-five minutes where we're just gonna ask them to.
Yeah, or I would say, I'd say their official hours are ten to two, but if they wanna say nine to two, cause they're just there with their stuff.
Or eight to ten.
They, I mean, they, they're gonna wanna do it longer.
That's during the.
Do we have a good enough idea, cause how many more things do we have to?
So I wanna put nine to two.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say nine to two, then you can get started early and then you can take a little break.
So the math will be nine, okay, it'll be nine to two.
Yes, and make sure.
And set up to Derek's point would be six to eight.
Yes.
And you, and you have some artists that are gonna be not at the barn, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And where will they be?
They'll be at their homes, at their studios.
Okay. And do you have, do, do you know the difference for the marketing material? I haven't gotten any, I haven't received anything.
Okay.
So I don't know if you've been communicating with him or Gretchen.
Yeah, I don't think it's Derek, Gretchen, yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, is that good? So you're gonna check with your artists and make sure it's okay, you let me know.
Yeah.
Either way, and then when I talk to the Raptor Center, find you to change it.
I think it'll be fine.
Okay. Perfect. Most artists are quiet anyways and can just like.
Well, there's two of these.
Oh, they're making out there, all right, wild.
But they're great.
Pony rides.
So pony rides, um, I have spoken to two people so far, gotten a quote back from one. Um, what we can do is we can get three ponies. It would be 500 for the first hour, 300 for additional hours. Um, they um.
What company?
Uh, About Town Ponies.
Okay.
They do have their own insurance, but that doesn't cover, you know, a place where they're having an event per se.
We do, we need to add them for insurance?
But but, so we would want to check with insurance just for, but they do have a waiver that they normally give and in North Carolina, um, they're very um. Liberal in terms of protecting people that have equine events going on, there's a couple of signs that we would have to post just somewhere around where we're doing it. Um, and you can buy those signs for $10 now at the horse place, you know?
Yeah.
Um, one thing about that is when we used to do this with the mayor's event many years ago. Um, we, we, we charged for the pony rides, which I think is appropriate and will help us to recoup the cost, the costs.
Me too.
So I would recommend like $5 a ride, you know, typically that's a five, you're 10 minute ride that they walk around a field. We could do it on kind of the lower field there or really anywhere we want within the park. Uh, the one thing that I, I know has been an, an issue and I guess the finance person, typically. I know it's difficult for the, for the village to bring in cash at events. So what I was wondering was whether or not we would want to do something also to kind of create demand for it. Where you have to reserve your pony rides online. So I, I think if we have an easy way to do that. Um, that actually might build some anticipation of it as well, you know, where you can order your tickets. Uh, unless you tell us, you know, you can take the $5 cash and that's no problem, like I just thought that was an issue.
We put $500 already in this.
Yeah.
I, I don't see charging people to do it, honestly.
But we're gonna be like two hours until like $800.
Yeah.
But this was what we were putting aside. I don't know, it's, I mean, it's up to you guys.
I shouldn't give my opinion. It's $800.
I've got a lot of opinions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine either way, I just, you know that they would pay it in a heartbeat, some people would pay for their kids to go two or three times.
Well, just so you know, as a mom, I wouldn't want to reserve a pony time, I'm a mom of three, I'm not reserving a pony time.
But you would pay $5 to put your girls on a pony.
I would pay $5 to put my girls on a pony. But I don't know how we're going to collect money there because I can't be at all places.
Uh, I haven't gotten a quote back yet, I, I reached out to Jeff Wiley, another American art.
Azu Tiu is also really good.
There's not many people doing it now, especially because of COVID, even the birthday parties.
I used Azu Tiu and had one at my house.
Mm-hmm.
And they brought all kinds of animals and did a petting zoo and I thought it was pretty reasonable.
Okay.
I mean, pretty reasonable is more than that, um, and I had, I had a unicorn.
Yeah, they, they do the unicorn.
I had a mini unicorn like running around, just like cute, all dressed up, and then I had like a big pony that people could ride. They brought like bunnies and they brought a pig and they brought like a thing and set it up and I thought that was so much cooler.
That could be great for the kids.
They had, they do a really great, I like that.
Let's go.
Then it's like I would have two kids on ponies and then I'd have the petting zoo going on and then. But you can't really charge.
For the petting zoo.
Or, yeah, so it's just kind of like, but it brings so, everyone brings their little kids to see all the little animals, it's fun.
So we call Azu Tiu.
I'll, I'll do that one as well.
And see.
Cause I wanted to get three quotes, I tried two other people, but they're not doing it.
So it actually.
Well, there's only, the only thing at the park is the barn, so I don't know where else we would have.
In, on the green space, outside the barns.
I, I, I was thinking.
I'm just waiting for Derek to give me crap about that.
Where we did it before is where the old corral used to be, we just walked them around that kind of field there, I know it gets wet at times.
I mean, honestly, my backyard is all that they used, I have a pool, family used the green space over there.
What about the stuff right across the street from the, from the barn?
Yeah.
That was, that's where they used to do the pony rides, right there.
They bring their own, well, Azu Tiu brought their own like fence too and everything, it was great.
For them, yeah.
Honestly, they do, they do a good job.
Yeah.
So would that area work?
I mean, we can find an area, um, I'm just worried about parking and conflicts with other events.
Well, are we gonna be parked, we're not gonna be parking people there, are we?
No, we're gonna park them in the park, but I mean, we can only hold like 90 cars.
Well, we'll be fine.
That'll be fine, listen, we got 90 cars.
I, I'll start running the shuttle, I can bring people in my car.
No, we can start shuttling.
Well, and, and that's the other thing, they're very flexible on timing, so we can look at times. Now, what I was hoping to do also though, was to have the pony rides at the park earlier in the day. But also provide information about pony rides, about the equine thing, probably later in the afternoon.
I like the pony ride from 12 to 2 because then you've got.
2, cause lunch.
Yeah.
You've got, and then you've got right after the Raptor Center and then you've got hopefully burger release and maybe those people will stay and hang out in the park and maybe buy some stuff.
12 to 2 for the.
That's what I was hoping to get.
And the pony rides and the petting zoo are, they're separate of each other.
Like the company I use for a party.
They did both.
They had horses there and they brought like a llama or not a, what are those?
Alpaca.
Yeah, those things.
Alpaca, alpaca, alpaca.
They had alpacas, pigs, a mini cow, I didn't know those were a thing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll check with them, I'll quote.
It was so cute.
I got pretty good handle on that. And if 12 to 2 is the timing that we're talking about, that sounds pretty good.
Again, I think the, the message here to most of this is from the start till the, about to the end, the kids.
Yep.
Um, the parents have the middle because of art and stuff like that and the food trucks and stuff like that, kids just want food trucks.
Yeah, I think that's great, like for me, because I can go to the park and just eat. I, I like places where I can eat, feed my kids, have them entertained for a few hours, make it through that stretch of the afternoon.
Maybe buy me something.
Buy me some, like look at different displays of stuff, I think that's really cool.
Yeah.
Um, just as a heads up on a finance, you have to have three quotes, that's our policy.
I was working toward that anyway.
And then if we don't, then you have to have approval.
Yeah, that's fine.
But isn't it under a certain threshold we don't have to, like $1,500, right, you don't have to have three quotes?
Correct.
That is correct.
Well, Christina told me that we needed three quotes for a t-shirt vendor, so.
I'll get.
We'll spend more than 1,500 on t-shirts, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, as for paying, I don't know how we're gonna handle that yet because like, that would mean a staff member would need to be there collecting.
Let's just find out, let's get three quotes, let's figure out how much money it's gonna cost and then we'll make a decision, cause that is, we can figure that out.
I think, is it possible that the vendor can collect that much money for anything?
We just.
He literally was saying it when he walked in.
I'm sure I could work, I, I actually discussed that with them too and I could work something out.
Like Azu Tiu took half the money upfront.
Yeah.
And then I paid them the day of the event, but I think I paid like seven or $800 for two or three hours.
Yeah, she just needs to know she's gonna get the 800, I mentioned that we made charge for the horse rides and pony rides and she was fine with that, so whether it's us taking it or them. She could just take however many we get, because they have a sign up sheet anyway, because there's a waiver, so everybody has to sign up on the sign up sheet anyway.
And obviously every vendor, I'm gonna have to have them fill out a um, finance form and all of that too, so make sure whoever we go with. And then I'll have to add them to our insurance and all of that, that goes for everybody.
I'll check with the Zoo to You.
Yeah, and then, and then.
They're great.
So hopefully we'll have that information for Tuesday and we can nail that down and then figure out the payment stuff. Okay.
All right, do you have anything for our equine?
Yeah, um, I did have a conversation with Andrea Gzinski of Cedar Hill. Again, she can be very flexible and, and, and when we want to do it. What we spoke about doing there is um, more of just like a one to one and a half hour exhibition. Um, she's a hunter jumper there, so that's what they would normally be doing, I thought about seeing if there's other disciplines, dressage or something. But then you get into, you know, people needing coggins, if they're bringing different horses to the facility and stuff like that, so. I, I'm thinking just hunter jumper would be pretty, pretty good itself.
And that's like an hour?
About an hour, I discussed with her, she could be talking about, um, you know, the different types of horses that, you know, people use, so they'll be kind of narrating through it. It's not just gonna be people standing there and looking, but they'll be talking about how they train, you know, the different types of stuff like that.
That's obviously onsite.
That's gonna be onsite at Cedar, at Cedar Hill, they have decent parking there.
But they also have the high school, they can walk from the car show.
My thought was that we do that later in the afternoon as we're trying to build more people, you know, going in that direction, so.
Like 2:30 to 3:30?
Yeah, that, she's very flexible with the timing, so if we could do 2:30, 3:30 or 3 to 4, whatever.
I, that's great.
Promote it at the car show, yeah.
Yeah, we're cross promoting everything out there.
But what I told her, if she gets me, you know, brochures and other things like that.
Oh, yeah, we can.
We'll distribute it at our other different events throughout the day, it'll be a good opportunity for her to get, you know.
Car show.
Interested in her summer camps and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Cancel earlier.
Like my kids would love a farm tour, walk around, see everything and then they can promote the camps. So what, what times were we thinking?
I'd say 2:30 to 3:30 or 3, 4.
Make it 3 to 4 so it gives people the, you know, because I know if there are car people. You gotta take time to get your cars out of there and clean up and stuff.
3, 4.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna have.
Not everybody's gonna do everything.
So what time?
3 to 4.
3 to 4.
Um, and I'm gonna have a follow up meeting with her and Jill Grisay. Uh, Jill Grisay is just somebody that volunteered to help me kind of coordinate either of the, the equine activities and um. So we're gonna have a kind of a separate meeting going forward, I told them I'd be sharing some of this information here. And I'll probably have a call or a meeting with them between now and Tuesday as well.
And feel free to either texting's easier or copy me on emails or send me emails, whatever's easier, if you want to send more information, like it, I'm happy just to.
Yeah, so far it's been all phone calls that I've spoken to people, but I will do that.
More information, the better.
Yes.
All right, um, I wanna skip food trucks and go to Firethorn Open House.
Okay, I am meeting with Firethorn next week, or no, no, uh, tomorrow, tomorrow, I'm sorry, tomorrow, I'm, I'm trying to meet with them tomorrow.
They're still good?
They're still good, they're all in, um, and I'm gonna nail down kind of what the schedule's gonna be like, I've got my list here for you Derek. Um, what they're gonna be offering, when they're gonna be offering it, if they have their, the shuttle is basically gonna be for Firethorn members who are doing it. So I don't know that we need to advertise that, I think Firethorn can do that.
Yeah.
Um, contact.
Shuttles for people at the tournament to come.
Like their spouses, yes.
Okay.
Um, but, but all this stuff, I will get all these details and have it for you by Tuesday.
Thank you.
Yep, what?
Raptor Center, we've already talked about that.
Hold on, Jamie had a question.
That's member, member, member?
Member guest.
Member guest, okay.
Member guest.
Ken, Raptor Center, you get, you have them until 4, what time are they gonna open?
They're, so they want, I don't know what time they're gonna come set up, is that your question?
Yeah.
I don't know yet.
6 to 8.
6 to 8.
The setup's 6 to 8, so the presentation will be posted at 8 o'clock.
Oh yeah, the presentation they want to do.
Well, I mean, they're, when I say presentation, they're gonna be 8 to 4.
Yeah. I would assume so.
I'm gonna try and get this on a better format for us, cause I can't read this, so we'll get it looking a little better, so we can lay out all these times in a neater way.
Okay. Food trucks are whole, on hold.
Closing event and concerts.
What, what just happened, oh?
We skipped all the junk in the middle.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
Okay, fireworks. No, you just took out all of these and so.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to follow along, okay.
I'm just going by the pattern of the scene that you're in.
Okay.
All right.
So on the fireworks, um, when I spoke with them, you know, they're, they're obviously wanting, how, how big do you want? I think, I don't think a 4th of July type, I don't think we need that, I think if they do a, you know, a good 10 to 15 minute, I think.
I do.
I, I don't think it should be a 45 minute.
Where would they actually be doing it?
They can do it behind the, the, the high school, like, you know, where the football stadium's at, over by the bus parking lot or down by that field down there, they can, they can set them off right there.
And the school approved that?
Well, I gotta check on that.
Cause we know Firethorn can do it, they've done it in the past.
But you don't, but you want, but you want, when that band's, when that band is done, when they hit their last done, bam, fireworks go.
I agree, the only other option it would be at, that would scare the shit out of the horses.
Yeah, you wouldn't want.
Yeah, but they're gonna be right there and that's one of the issues of having fireworks right next to a horse, they're, they're not gonna be happy, let's just say.
Right, so, but I told them to get me pricing on, on a reduced, I don't need the Firethorn 4th of July, I need something reduced. And they said they would work on that for me to get that.
So when you're talking about the field, you're talking about the field.
Yeah, little practice field, you know, as you're coming behind the, the back.
By middle school.
No, no, up, up by the bus lot.
Up by the bus lot, is it the one that kind of goes down a little bit?
Just to your right, there's a little practice.
Down in a little.
Oh, that's where, that's where middle school cheer use.
And, and field hockey, they play there.
Yeah, okay.
So I would put, so Austin, do you have your contact at the school, cause I know we were looking at how much it's gonna cost?
Oh, it's $925 to rent the school for the entire day, we also have to pay the county sheriff's office to be there.
Yeah, I figured we were gonna have to do that.
They can deduct that, they can deduct that from what they.
Is that 925 part of the car's cost that you have in here, car show?
Uh, I don't know if that's what's in here or not, I just got this pricing just before I left on my trip, uh, we have to pay it, we have to pay it by May 1st.
Okay, so who's your contact at the high school?
Uh, assistant principal Nancy Claudia.
Perfect, you ask her if we can set up fireworks after the concert.
She, I think she'd have to ask the county.
We might have to do more with the application, I don't know if we included that in the initial.
Well, that's fine, just ask her, ask her the question, like we gotta get going, like it's February, like it's, we gotta.
We gotta roll.
Yeah.
And that's the use of the stadium?
Yes, I know that they are supposed to be having their track redone around that time, uh, so they, they said if that's happening, we just can't touch the track.
That's impossible.
Yeah, you can't even get the band on there without.
Band onto the field without crossing the track. The track goes around the field.
From previous conversation I've had with her, she made out like that we would be able to make successful use of the area without touching the tracks. They might have to play something over, over the track when it's being done, redone, so we can get to it.
Plywood over.
That, yeah, yeah.
I think their fear is that, that's, that's a point to get in, but people walking on it are messing.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna have anybody on the track, you're gonna go this way, you're gonna go this way.
Yeah, I would say you direct all the people on one side of the, where the home side is and nobody on the other side.
Yeah, nobody, that, that's like.
Access is where.
You do it on that way, I was thinking you would do it at the end zone, but maybe you do it at the 50 yard line facing the home stadium.
Oh yeah, that's exactly what you do.
So I need, I need to talk.
Fireworks right behind it.
Fireworks would be off to your left.
Yeah.
Band right in front of you, band access is from where the high school band comes in on the backside and everyone else, public stays on. No, never go down in the.
That's what I'm saying, they stay off the track.
They stay in the stands.
So what, so what question do I need to ask Nancy?
I said they stay off the track.
I said stay on the track.
Stay off the track.
Whether we're allowed to launch fireworks, where would we launch them from?
The, just tell them the middle school, um, field hockey, practice field.
Middle school.
Field hockey, practice field.
Yeah.
And it's basically a middle school.
Middle school practice field, just say that, cause they.
But they don't want, they don't want the football practice field at the middle school, they want the, the lower one, the one that, the one that's by the bus lot, tell them that.
Yeah, by the bus.
Lower, by bus lot.
Booster club would wanna open the concession stand or?
We're gonna have food trucks.
We're gonna have food trucks there, but I can sort.
That's another fundraiser for the band that we could do if we need to, but I'll, I'll get into that, we get into the question.
Yeah, you're gonna have more questions to send to the school, so just get a running list.
I can help too.
Yeah, thanks.
So I need to get with Christina on the stage piece. Because the, the one band I'm talking to said they can provide their own, if the, if the stage is there, they'll set their, all their stuff up. When I looked at the times here and um, it's, at that, that time of year, it's gonna start getting dark around. it's at that, that time of year is gonna start getting dark around, you know, they were thinking, if we're just gonna do one band, we do seven to like seven to nine thirty or maybe. At, I just need to talk to Christina on this because I don't see why we can't have a small band or individual playing. And then when they're done, bring on the other band, full band, because if you're trying to go, a band is typically not gonna go from seven to ten. That's three hours.
No, well, we changed ten to either nine or nine thirty.
Okay, I'd say, I'd say.
Fireworks at nine.
I'd say nine, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it's gonna take.
Is it dark, is it dark at nine in May?
It will be, it will. I'd I'd say the band go from what, from six thirty to nine thirty, maybe we get a single, and I'll go go cover this with Christina. Maybe we get a single person up there playing or a small group playing and then bring on the larger band.
Yeah.
Cause they'll have all their stuff already set up.
We just did tentative, so like whatever you nail down is perfect.
So, not to throw a wrench in any of this, but I only know this because I know it and I'm down on the field. There's very little capabilities for.
Electro, electro.
Electrical, and they have the worst sound system ever. So obviously they'll have their own speakers set up, but it's getting power to them. Cause when the band performs, we have to bring a generator.
I have generators.
Okay, well, I'm just letting you know, there's nothing there to promote. I mean, they do bands, but the bands do their own thing and they bring their own generators to plug in for.
I got a generator, okay.
So do we have bands or a band?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got two that are tentative.
Okay.
That I've said pencil me in, cause they want to do this. I mean, they're like, man, please let me do it.
Okay.
Um, so.
And what kind of bands are they?
Well, they're, they're country bands. One, one's, one's a country band, but they play, they're gonna play all the stuff that, cover stuff that people wanna, that people wanna listen to and sing along to.
Would be really cool to fill in spots to get, when you get the kids involved. I guarantee you, there's a couple of kids that have their own bands.
Oh, we've already talked about that.
We were talking about doing that earlier.
About their potential.
Like the battle of the bands and just like, but then we were concerned about what kind of songs they were gonna play.
Wow, you just. Let them know, yeah, we'll shut you down. It will just turn on.
Well, unplug you.
But, I mean, I've, so I've got two that, two that are tentative. One is a, is a band. He's in Nashville. He just signed a Nashville deal. He's got a song that's gonna be released in, uh, in a couple of weeks. So that's gonna be, that'll be good. And then I've got another person that's tentative that, and again, price is low on these. They'll be staying with me. So we we can keep the price down. And if Christina can just get it, we'll, on the, if they can just set up, to put the stage in place, we can run electricity through, you know, through generators.
But do you want, do you want them to run the sound and all that stuff?
What she said, what she said is that, what she's found, especially if you're changing bands at all.
Yep.
Is that typically even the performers prefer to have a sound system and they just come and plug in.
Right, and that's why I need to get with her. Okay, if, if, cause that's a.
He's bringing in Tim McGraw, so they've got their own truck and trailer.
Understood. And that might save us some money with the guy, where he's really just a leper on the stage.
Yeah.
Platinum guy.
They're gonna bring in their sound stuff and the person that comes in, they'll set.
They have a sound person, cause that was the other thing she said.
They'll set.
I'm a groupie.
That's the price of what they're doing. They'll say, listen, dude, if you can get us in and we can do this, we'll play for two hours and we'll blow it up.
Okay.
And we've got our own, we got our own sound equipment. So the other person that can come in, he's just gonna plug into their stuff, cause they'll already have it set up.
Yeah.
And they can just play.
Yeah.
For forty-five minutes to an hour, take a break, everyone's getting food, everyone's doing whatever. They can, they, they'll even run their own, like a, put the plug into the thing and just run music out. And then they'll come, they'll get on and.
So are we five to seven and seven to nine or six to seven and then seven to?
I'd say six to seven and then seven to nine. I'd say maybe six thirty to nine thirty.
Okay, six thirty to nine thirty. See, I feel like we're gonna have a big gap between car show.
People gotta get showered and get their.
That's what I was wondering. I think you're almost better kind of.
Don't we need like a shower?
Six to seven, seven to nine.
That's when they're all gonna come to Village Hall and tour.
Well, so the meet and greet thing, when I, when I looked at this, when I looked at this calendar, is there a way that we can start the? Cause you got car shows starting at ten, right?
When you can start the meet and greet later in the afternoon at like two.
See, you got a gap right here from like three to five to do maybe meet and greet?
Or two to five.
Well, yeah. I mean, if you want council members to be there, I mean, I will be.
Meet and greet as at.
We don't all have to be there.
High school or the town hall.
Villachaw.
All of us.
Yeah.
I mean, that.
Three to five is good.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, cause I mean, you're, cause you wouldn't be able to be there and you were probably with Bob.
He wants to be at the car show, or Bob at the car show. And then we can do the meet and greet, Kim and I and Andy and.
I'd say do it from two to five or, no?
It's a long time to be.
No, no, no. Do we wanna move the Cedar Hill thing from three to four to four to five? You know what I mean?
No, cause I feel like if people are already at the high school, then they could just go.
Starting at four, but what will be there for them at four at the high school?
Food trucks, maybe.
Yeah, that seems, that's why I'm wondering whether four to five might.
They're renting the barn for graduation.
Do that a little better, because otherwise.
I'm sure.
Any of the people that you're getting there to Cedar Hill, are they gonna start eating at four o'clock?
No, probably not, but then they can come to Village Hall and meet everybody. And then come back.
I think we're almost better just pushing the Cedar Hill four to five.
So then you have people when they wrap up.
So then you have people there, they wrap up, and then kind of festivities are starting or close enough.
That's fine. Okay, so do that four to five. I would change meet and greet at Village Hall from two to five.
Do we need that much time?
You, you already have from ten to two.
No, what I mean is.
Too much time.
Yes, that's too much time, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
We, we do coffee of council for one hour and we get the two people.
I know, but people are, it's gonna be a brand new town hall, like, I mean, I, we're gonna have.
We already have the grand opening now, so it's just the meet and greet type thing, so.
But how many people are gonna come to the grand opening? I guarantee more people if they're out and about to the Marvin Day, they're gonna stop in and do that.
I definitely wouldn't do more than two hours. I don't think you need.
Yeah, I think two hours max.
Um, and we can have.
Three to five?
Yeah.
We can also, we can ask James if he wants to be anywhere else during the day. I, I know he's got a couple of things that he's gonna be bringing, but we can go over more of that one more. Are we already at the meet and greet? I got more updates when we get there.
All right, are we, are we? Hold on, are we, Jamie, are you done with closing event concert?
Yeah, I'm just gonna get with Christina and we'll have that stuff nailed down real shortly.
Do you wanna do the meet and greet like in the morning, kind of, um, right off of the elementary school?
I just wanna be able to make it to the Raptor show though, cause we all have to be there.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna have to be at the.
And I think you're gonna have a lot of people involved in the garden.
Put Village Hall in the afternoon.
Yep.
Are they Village Hall?
Three to five.
Three to five.
Well, that'll be good.
Does that conflict with your event, the horse event?
Yeah, I don't think they'll conflict with one either.
And you can only have so many people there.
Okay, so we're doing Village Hall, meet and greet, three to five.
Three to five.
I have a couple of updates on this.
I don't know, I mean, there's a burger release, someone will be there either, so. A burger? Burger release.
Burger.
I'm hungry.
All right. Jamie, anything else on the concert?
That's why I wanted two to five.
Okay. Austin, you got the list of things to ask the school?
I guess you got B two.
Let's, let's, let's go over the list one more time to have.
We're not done with the school list. We're still, cause we have to do a car show.
Okay. All right, let's, we're gonna jump to car show.
Yeah, go to car show and then we can add our.
Where, where's car show?
Let's, wait, hold on, I went from closing event concert to car show.
Yeah.
I don't even have a.
I'm, I'm, I'm the car show.
Oh, there it is, backwards.
Okay, car show.
All right. Should I, should I speak? Okay.
I got you, I got you right in at the top of the.
Yeah, I know, I said, I noticed you put me right in front, you know, I had a hard stuff, but anyways, just to give you a little bit of history on, on Marvin Bird's band.
Here we go.
They, no, just, they normally have car shows every year in the spring. Last spring, they canceled it because of COVID. Then they decided to throw one together within, like, they had two months to prepare this. And they threw it together in the fall. It went from the previous year of a hundred and twenty cars, a hundred and ten cars, to a hundred and eighty-five cars. This guy did it by himself. He had two months to prep this. I don't wanna reinvent the wheel here, but I also want to do something in conjunction. I think we're looking at this, a lot of this, in, in, in the wrong light, how you're talking to them. My head was about to explode when, when I, he gave me the list of what to be, consider what thing, because the car show needs to have a ability, you got four hours there for people to use the restrooms. So that's where the high school comes in, where you can access that. Um, you need a janitor in there to pay for it. So initially, the band, when he did this, it started at five hundred dollars. He got this high school because, again, band does not get funded by anyone like a football team does. They're self-funded. Every year, they do a mattress sale. Well, the last time they did a mattress sale, they sold one mattress. That's now by its side and stuff. This last car show for them produced seven thousand dollars in revenues and stuff. And they're a five oh one three C. So essentially, and you haven't heard this and Andy hasn't heard this yet, but I talked to the rest of the council on this and Christina, and I think maybe Bob a little bit. But I think what we need to do is, this guy, I said, well, okay, so you didn't have it in the spring, you had it in the fall, you're gonna do it for next spring? He goes, I'm not sure I'm gonna do it again. I said, why not? He goes, I didn't have any help. I go, you never ask and stuff. So I am presenting to the board, the formal board on the third of February for the band, to propose to them, let's not reinvent the wheel, let's use all the things that this guy has done. He's done it by himself. Now we have Bob, myself and John Jones. Those three plus you have, you require people, the kids to sign up. These kids do show up for this. And it's an opportunity where no taxes are being paid. We're not paying anything. We're not on the hook for anything. So I, you, you get the revenue from twenty-five dollars a car as, as the entrance level that comes in. Um, and then there's a raffle sell there, there's a fifty fifty, there's all these different things. Now, here's the kicker, and this is what's really confusing me. Um, I said, well, what'd you pay for the food trucks? He's like, nothing. He goes, they just came, and he goes, and they both sold out because it was such a big event. He's got all the connections through all the car shows, Waxah, Cars with Coffee, all the different shows. You promote this, he has a Facebook page, he has a QR code. They have the ability that if you're, if you're, you get this flyer, you basically click on this and there's your ability to pre-register. And it all goes through. We don't have to set up an account, which could be, you know, mixing funds with the public event. It all goes into them and all we're asking the band to do is cover our net for what we have. And maybe, maybe put some money towards sponsorship if we have, but this is an easy way for us. And if we get this guy help, we could take this car show for one, we may have to limit it at two hundred cars, cause at one eighty-five, that took up the whole bottom parking lot and we had overflow for guests that was coming.
Well, that was gonna be my question, was how many spots, like, how many, like, parking spots are at the high school? Cause we are gonna need, so I'm.
Well, the parking.
They're gonna be gone though by the time we're done.
No, no, I know, but I'm just saying for people who are coming to the car show, like.
Right, so what, what happened was, and again, this is where, you know, they need the volunteers and stuff, is they used the upper parking, which is closest to the school for spectators.
Yeah.
The lower level, they ended up having to put people out where the car show was. Now, I was probably halfway, it's a hundred and eighty-five cars, I was halfway. My car, I got there late, was, was probably right in the middle of the parking lot, on the lower level parking lot. There's plenty of space there for.
But do you think we should limit it?
Well, we don't know. We may have to shut it off and just shut down the QR code, people go to thing. I can talk to this guy about that because he knows that better. But here's the deal. I mean, he took, he started at five hundred dollars with the high school as he's negotiating. He gets it down to a hundred and fifty dollars. And we have access, cause the other thing you gotta, not just bathrooms, but tables, chairs, four people setting up the booths. You've got ability to put tents up there. Um, you've got, he had three trucks, only one truck asked for a minimum of six hundred dollars. It was a coffee truck. He goes, the pizza truck and the, uh, they, they both said, you do this again, let us know. They sold out of everything they had and it didn't cost them a dime. Because they knew, they knew on the pre-registering how many cars that they were gonna be coming. And he did this in two months. And I'm, I'm just saying that this type of thing, um, with the volunteers from the kids with that, and any kid that volunteers, if we, we don't need them here, we can move them over to the fun run or whatever it is. But I'm gonna ask that the band, you know, look, we're gonna raise seven thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more like we did, cause now we have a little bit more time with that. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that council was good with it. I think the band, after talking to the president, she's asked me to speak on the board. I think we'll be fine there. I think it's just get this guy. He has a whole spreadsheet. He goes, I'll, I'll give you everything I did and just hand it over to me. I'm going, well, would you help if we? He's a parent, so there was nothing in it for them. Bob Markelis is, was going down the road of Cafe, the Ferrari Group. That guy runs a business. He's looking to make a profit out of this. This is a five oh one three C. All they're doing is to look into raise funds and we have the connection with the school, so the cost of the twenty-four, twenty-five, it's includes high school rental costs, that may go out the window if we turn this over to, and we just do it in conjunction with, you know, Marvin Day is sponsoring. So I don't know, it gets tricky with whoever you talk to. The principal will say, look, we, we want the band to do this. We want the funds to go to the band. Cause nobody supports bands, not gonna take tax dollars, and these cars will come from all over.
So, okay, so I think first things first. Jamie, are you fine with this? Okay, so council, I think structural wise, everybody was fine. I think you didn't talk to Andy, but you've got, everybody else is fine. So I say council's good with it, we can move forward. Austin, I say ask your question about the fireworks, don't ask anything else. Joe, you go and talk to the band, the board, see what they have to say. At that point, is that guy gonna come to that meeting?
I don't know if he'll be at that meeting, but he's, when I presented to him in, in, in coffee where Bob was supposed to be and John, um, but they were, um, sick and, um, but he said that, when he first said, he goes, I, I'm not sure I'll do it again, but when I said, would you, if we brought you the help? He's like, yeah, I mean, he was, he was like very open to that. He goes, you just gotta check with the president and the board members.
Do you think he should go to that meeting?
I can call him and I can text him and say, hey, or at least be on, it's a Zoom call.
Be on this, oh, per, oh.
I think it is. I think it's a Zoom call.
Even better. So then if you can, have him on that call, you guys can kind of nail it, nail down the details and just be like, listen, we will get you help, like, like, we will have people.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna tell the board members.
He's already got three more people to help than he had before.
Right, and, and, and I never, the whole time, I was never asked anything. And I'm thinking, why didn't you? And I don't even think the band, the band board knows how much work this guy did. But he did it in two months and he got a hundred and eighty-five cars, all on his own, car shows. And then there's some work done the night before where you're bringing, we're loading tray, and in the trailers, which we have, the, the, which we are provided from the high school, the, the tables, chairs, all the things we need down there. Um, he goes, raffle tickets, you just go online and get a bunch of fifty fifty raffle tickets and stuff. As we're talking, the manager of Starbucks was there. She's like, I'm, I'm being nosy. She goes, come talk to me for raffle gifts and stuff. Like bund cakes would offer free bund cakes, Starbucks offers free things, all these different types, but it's all fundraising, where it's all donated items. The other issue is the, is the judges. This is usually sometimes where the cost is. You can give volunteers, but he printed out a simple sheet and got volunteers to go around and specifically, and then you have a ticket for everyone to put in for fan favorite. Like, we could have like the mayor's choice or council's choice and the mayor's choice and, uh.
The mayor's choice and the mayor's choice.
And the mayor's choice.
That's the only thing you're gonna get, so you might as well take that.
I'm gonna go with my card.
So have the meeting. Make sure they're on board, make sure this guy's on board.
I don't see any problem with them not being on.
And then I think we've got another joint meeting on.
We haven't officially called for it yet, but it'll be on the twenty second of February.
Twenty second, okay.
And then, and then, and I'll have the meeting. I, I'm confident that th- these guys are crazy today, cause this is an easy, this is a turnkey system that we just need to.
So if they say yes, and they're good with it, then I would take the guy and you, and you guys go to the high school and be like, listen.
Right.
This is, we've already got the high, like, we've already got, you know, four cars in.
And then I'd have Austin do that.
Not have Austin do it, just ask about the fireworks, but then you do the, the money thing and the access and all that stuff.
So, so we know, and I talked to Bob, Bob here, that, about this, this, the ice cream, you don't have, still to this point, you don't have a contract with the ice cream.
We have an agreement and he's locked in today, but there is no contract.
Okay. So my thought is, Scar. Okay. So my thought is, Scarlet Properties wants in-kind, bring, they have their own truck now, and they go to the different events. They can't sell anything, so they just pass out. What they're willing to do is pass out $500 of pre-wrapped ice cream. My understanding when I talk to you is they have pre-wrapped ice cream that they, it's all pre-wrapped anyway. So it's just the promo thing, but they want the ability because that group, Scarlet Realty, they want the ability to talk to people, which is exactly what you get at a car show or over at the park. We just gotta decide where we're gonna strategically park these vehicles. Now, if we wanna pay for, you know, to, you know, to guarantee the $600 and stuff, I, I guess, I, I don't know why, if they hit their $600 mark, do we still have to pay them $600? How does that work?
We get 200 free.
No, no, no. I'm saying on the food trucks. If, if we promise them, we write them a check for $600 and then they, but if they hit that $600 number.
Hold on.
Dan, Dan.
Go ahead.
You have to guarantee their revenue, and if they hit it, you don't owe them anything.
If they don't, then we have to make up the difference.
Yep.
Okay. And that's fair.
One thing I just wanna bring up real quickly with respect to the ice cream is that a lot of the food trucks that are more kid-friendly that you guys requested have ice cream. And they don't show up to shows, or maybe you can get them to, but they seem not to wanna show up to places that have ice cream already. So just, it's not a problem because we can pick different food, but a lot of the ones with hamburgers, hot dogs, and things like that have ice cream as well. So just, I'm gonna bring that up.
The one I was thinking, just so, you know, one, the two I was thinking was a taco out of Waxah and a pizza place out of Waxah, that both trucks, they didn't have any problem. But I, I know, I know that's an issue that, and even Scarlet Properties told me that, that other food trucks don't like one ice cream, especially when they're just giving it away. So one thing, I went back to Scarlet and said, would you be, would you be interested in coming to our grand opening and, and doing your truck there, but then set up a tent and pay $500 cash? We'll consider you a silver sponsor and just kind of split that up. And they come to a, our, because that'll be a lot more focused on a grand opening. He sits out in the parking lot. He gets a lot of business that way. And then we, I can go back to them and say, hey, give us the $500, commit to us for the grand opening. We'll consider you a silver sponsor, and you just won't have a truck so we can.
I think, I think that's a better idea.
And they're open to that. They would like to be at both, is what they said.
And I think that they can be, but I don't think they should have the ice cream, like, the food trucks don't want, I mean, they're gonna compete against each other anyway, but they don't wanna compete against free.
No, I know that. It's just ice cream, but food trucks are food, not necessarily, I think they also have ice cream.
But most of them have, like, some sort of dessert, and they don't wanna miss out on that revenue. So I say, have the, have the ice cream.
Yeah. And my point going back is, these food trucks that this car guy got, he didn't have to commit to anything. I mean, which is kind of nice. The one he did, did say $600 minimum, and he said, we're not, we're not gonna have you then.
So I would say, let's.
But the only issue is, they got the janitor down to 150 bucks. That's something that we can do. So I don't know where this 24, 25 came in with your agreement. That may be the whole high school. I see here, car show.
That's $1,500 in off-duty officer fees.
Includes high school rental cost is 24, 25.
The rental cost is 925. We have to pay Union County Sheriff's Office to.
For the car show?
To be there the entire day, that, on the property.
For the car show?
Including the car show.
For everything.
Okay, because you're not required to have an officer there for a car show.
But the high school is requiring that we have officers there all day if we're renting it.
Yes.
Okay, but they rented it to, my point is, they rented it to the band. If it becomes a band event, we're just supporting it.
So that's why I'm saying, whenever you guys nail stuff down, you go in and talk to the school about the money.
Yeah. Ask them if we need officers for the car show. Is there, is there anything in particular we're gonna need to vote on today? I don't think so, but I just want to let you know, I have a hard stop at 11. I gotta, gotta step in.
No.
Can we make a decision on the ice cream?
Yeah.
What is the decision?
I don't know.
Well, I, I'm just telling them that, look, we already had sort of a semi-commitment Zoom. Have your guy come in. I think we can guarantee him $600, especially if he's over at the, if they're mobile and it's not going well over at the park, they can move over to the car show between 10 and 2.
I think they start at the park with the kids and the pony ride. They're gonna, if, if they're pony rides in the Raptor Center and the petting zoo, they're gonna sell a boatload of ice cream.
And, and just so, and.
And then move over later.
We still are gonna have, let's please not lose sight of the Fru-Fru chuck wagon either. Cotton candy, candy apples, popcorn, the, because that's a, hell, I don't want that.
So when do you want that?
Because I think that, when I was trying to negotiate the food trucks, I need to know what those are and where they're gonna be and when because it impacts which ones will commit. Also, I think, I don't know if it was the past market or the current market, but I haven't talked to any of the food trucks that don't want the, some kind of minimum commitment, especially with the new event.
Well, I'm just saying, this is an established event with the car show, so, and you may want to keep separate food trucks and roll the dice on the minimum over at the park.
Well, that's what.
But then you're gonna have food trucks at the car show too. I don't know if they're, they're gonna be that.
And also, you'd be looking for the car show ones to stay beyond to be able to handle the nice events.
Yeah, if they want, they just, they all ran out of food at the car show. They all, both trucks ran out.
So, so, so hold on. Here's the thing. Maybe Dan focuses on the music, you know, the high school concert and stuff for later in the day. Whereas you just keep the, the, the car show with the car show and, and.
I'm pretty confident this guy's in, that he's gonna get.
Happened to be ones that were at the car show before. It seemed like, they would, they all seemed to be interested in staying for both, so it's easier because you only have one to deal with. It's kind of nice. But everybody I talked to, I talked to the pizza folks that were at the Waxah, they're, went at the Waxah Farmers Market all the time that were recommended. Their problem is that they only can make 20 pizzas an hour, so they can run out pretty fast. Something like a car show, they've done that before.
And they, and they did. I waited 40 minutes for that.
Another truck called Nor East, Sweets and Eats. I think I got the name about right. They did the car show before as well. They have ice cream. They are a bigger truck, and so they, both of them said that they would like to do both, or they'd be happy to do both.
I have a comment about this truck. I'm actually very familiar with them. They come to my neighborhood quite a bit to do, like, just, you know, set up in the neighborhood on a side or right. They get it going very easily, and the line will be an hour long.
Yeah. No, my wait was an hour for the pizza, so I, I'm fine as long as we're not committed because I think if they're at the car show, we wanna move them into that. We're gonna meet their minimum, and we're, we won't be on the hook for anything. And that's the only thing I was worried about. Do we still, we paying them regardless to be there, regardless of how much they do?
They're gonna, they're gonna hit their numbers easily. So I say, because I think, I think the food truck is gonna be a much longer conversation. I think car show, you, you keep on the track that you're going on. I think all that sounds good. And I still think we, we gotta come back to the, to the food trucks. I think it's gonna be longer.
And then, one final thing, just, it's sort of off-topic, but it's not as, and talking to, when you told me to reach out to Potter Bear, who owns Southern Spears, he's offered his $40,000 VIP list to promote any and all of what we're doing, which really throws it out beyond Marvin and brings people in here. So we'll have that ability. And I'm, I'm on pretty good targets for what I've been assigned for this. So I've secured about $3,000, and I still need to talk to New York Life, Publix, and a couple other areas. Now, Jamie, I saw you had Movement Mortgage.
We're not, we're not on there now. We gotta stay on this.
All right, I'm just, tell you where I go.
We're on Village Hall, Jamie. I gotta keep that one.
Wrong, Jamie. Oh, that's all right. I just, that's all I had for me.
Okay, car show, you're done?
Yeah, yes, unless you have any questions.
Nope.
Hey, just.
Sounds a good job.
Hey, hey, Dan?
Yeah?
Hey, just kidding. He says, don't forget the Fru-Fru food truck. The cotton candy, candy apple, popcorn.
He just needs to know when and where.
Waffle maker.
But we gotta come back to that.
Yeah, we'll come back to that. Just.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta be very specific because, like.
Yeah.
It, uh, you can't, uh, it's not good to change it, I guess. So once I know the direction, you can do it. But like, the last, last marching orders we got, I don't know if that was in there.
Well, that's why I said I don't wanna forget it.
Because I'm saying that.
I mean, we got food trucks for adults, but we need a food truck for kids. And I don't know if it goes to, I'm, I'm not the location person or anything like that. We just have to have that somewhere.
We definitely have.
Right, but off the park.
Fru-Fru.
You get less kids at a car show.
Food, 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 kids. Okay, I've got, I've got it on the list.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we excuse myself.
Yeah, I apologize. I got a, I got a hard stop. I just missed, actually, so.
Okay, so are we excusing multiple board members?
I think we're gonna have to.
Okay, I think, I need a motion to excuse both Chairman Beresich and Dan Wilson.
Somebody's gotta make the motion.
Make the motion.
Make a motion.
Just say to the movement, there you go.
On my favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, guys.
Bye, Dan.
Okay, bye, John. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, John.
Okay, so we'll just keep on powering through, and we'll update everybody on.
Austin, Village Hall, meet and greet.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be quick on this. I'm glad we've shrunk this down to three to five. That's more manageable, and I think you'll, we'll have more people there. For the schedule, we can either do two groups of three, a one-hour each. We can do, or we can do three groups of two at 40 minutes apiece.
I am gonna be, if it's from three to five, I'm gonna be at the Raptor Center, or I'm gonna be at the park for the virgins. So I'm not gonna be at the Village Hall.
Well, this is a meet and greet with council.
I know, but if it's from three to five, which is why I said I'd really like it to be two to five, I will not be at Village Hall from three to five because I will be at the park dealing with that. I'm just saying, I will not be there.
I'm available at three to five. You, you don't have to have all council.
Everybody doesn't have to be there.
No.
It's just an idea to open those.
Can we ever rotate?
To have Gene Stowe.
How about?
Three to five. Car show will be done at two.
Okay, well, we'll figure out who's.
And we can all be there at the same time because.
Yeah, we have, we'll have, we're good.
We're gonna have a form notice. We, I mean, we are gonna be in multiple places with multiple people, multiple times.
I'm still working with Gene Stowe. He's gonna be there. We've got to iron out the finer details, what, everything he's gonna bring. We're trying to get the, some of the art from the movie premiere. They're gonna get copies of, like, courtroom sketches or whatever, some posters made up. And we might even be able to get a copy of those as, as like, pretty much a permanent loan for the Village Hall. Um, that's.
I think we may, when Gene's gonna be there, he needs to make sure he's got books so that he can sell and sign and.
Books, uh, we'll do, we'll do, was it that short, short film on repeat?
Yeah, on repeat, yeah.
Um, that's kind of what I pitched to him before. I'm making that.
And then I think if he wants to set up at, like, the park, like, at the barn, just to have, like, a little booth there, then he should do that, like, in the morning and then, and then.
Do it down on the overhang.
Yeah, just, you know, have tables outside.
Um, that's fine.
Jamie says she's going to.
That is hard to read.
It is.
What?
I think that's.
This is hard to read. She's gonna, Jamie's gonna change it. Looks like it was.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll figure out the schedule, um, for, for that.
I'd say anybody that's available, that's where they need to be.
There you go.
Five. If you don't have somewhere else to be, you're Village Hall from three to five. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay, we're good.
Good. Sponsorships. Hey, Joe, you wanna talk about how many you've done so far?
Um, so far, I have, uh.
Oh, he's serious.
Carolina Sports, $1,000. Chad Johnson, $1,000.
Okay, wait. Carolina Sports is an option. They're not on here.
Put them on there, then.
Jamie, add Carolina.
You're gonna tell me I, I can't go find someone and, and you're not gonna, I'm telling you that they're all.
I know, I know. I was saying, slow down so I can add them. Of course, I wanna add them.
You just add, you just ask me who I got. So Chad Johnson, $1,000. Scarlet Properties, $1,000 with the 50/50 split, so it's 500 cash.
Hold on, hold on.
I can do it at these. I, I don't know what you're saying.
Okay, Carolina Sports.
Okay, they're gonna.
Just add it down below.
A thousand dollars.
Thanks, CSC. Okay, $1,000. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add it, but I wanna make sure I have it right.
Scarlet Property, Chad Johnson, you already have on there. That's Johnson's, that's Chad's.
They can bring a tent. Or, they, or though.
Okay, Scarlet, yes, Ortho can bring a tent.
And where, where could they put it?
That's what I was gonna say. Where do they wanna put it? Do they want it at the high school, or do they want it at the?
I'll ask them.
We're gonna find out if we're doing a 5K, and afterwards, they'll stretch people out and set up a tent there.
No, no, this is Chad Johnson.
This is Ortho. You don't stretch people out with Ortho.
Oh, Ortho. I mean.
We moved on, yeah.
Oh.
But I agree with you. I agree.
Their, their options are at the elementary school in the morning, or at the high school in the mid, midday.
Elementary in.
Or they can do both.
Where are you having people set up there?
Or high school.
For what?
Tents.
High school midday?
Yeah, like at the car show, so they have people there?
That's morning.
It's 10:02. Is that not midday?
One second. He already has Wayne having people set up tents. So where are you having people set up tents with their business information?
At the car show.
Okay.
In front of the.
That's what he's, he's been asking where his people can set up and what times.
So elementary school in the morning, midday, which is like noon.
I'm just going with, high school 10:02, and, or elementary school in the morning. I'll give them that choice. Scarlet Properties, they have that truck, but they definitely will have a tent or something.
Scarlet Properties is gonna be $500 cash donation, but they're gonna be a silver sponsor because they are donating the ice cream.
But they're gonna pay $500.
Correct.
Yep.
But also, we consider.
So we don't, we don't get in, you know, anyone's here with that. And then Carolina Sports, again, is gonna want to set up a tent for their.
At the thing, yeah.
And they're giving a thousand dollars.
So that's where I'm really pushing. In fact, I'm gonna go measure out a five-mile walk that incorporates our, our regular walks, and I'll, I'll go, I'll go map it out myself if I get a roller with me.
There's actually, um.
Five miles?
It's not a five mile.
It's three miles.
5K, 5K.
So there's actually a, um, it's like Map My Run. There's a website.
Well, let's not, let's not go back into the five.
But anyways.
Okay, well, I'll talk to you after.
But it's important because.
There's a website where you're.
Scarlet Sports wants to set up a tent for that.
Sure.
They can.
That's what, that's what.
That's fine.
Yeah, that, that's what got them excited to sign up for $1,000. So that's why I, we could easily put together this walk around.
Okay, keep going. Next sponsor.
Okay, um, I'm meeting with New York Life on the 4th of Friday, so I would assume a minimum of $1,000 on that and stuff.
Will you just text me and let me know if, when you get?
Yeah, I, I will. Publix, we have not because they have a whole different process.
Yeah.
OG Light spoke to them. They said they could do something. No commitment yet on money. And the other items that you had there, I didn't know I was on with Terry Patton, so I just learned that. So I have to call her and Union Power.
Yeah.
Lorenzos, I've dropped off information for them. It's just a matter of them, um, talking, so. And then we may, um.
What about Gina Lorenzo? Did you call her yet?
I haven't called her yet, but I know you gave me that contact because I, I wanted to see, it's the same Lorenzo, I believe, isn't it? Her husband owns Lorenzo's?
I don't know.
I think, I think it is.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh.
That's why, I'm not sure, but I'm almost positive that she's the same person.
Okay, I didn't know that.
And then, yeah, OG and Lights would be combined together. However, there's some issues going on there, but we should be able to get something from them.
Okay.
And then I got a commitment from the boss that we would be doing a donation from Polino charitable funds. We just haven't decided how much.
All right, but then they're awaiting, awaiting a number. Okay. All right. Jamie Lyon. Um, wait, are you just Jamie or are you Jamie Lyon?
Both.
Okay.
Of course, some of these Jamie took, like the Aloha Nails. You took that one, right?
Yeah. So we'll change that to Jamie Bays. It says, mine say Jamie Bays, his say Jamie. Oh, I guess some of them are off. Okay. Mine just says Jamie.
So I'm waiting to hear back from Audibel. Compass Food Buy just waiting on their check. I have to still figure out how they wanna be, how they wanna be a sponsor. They may be sponsoring someone else.
Who is that? Compass?
Compass Food Buy. They may, they may put the money out, but put it towards someone else.
They don't want their name out there.
They don't want their name out there.
They're getting the supplier to pay for this.
No, they're gonna pay for it. They.
No, they're gonna pay for it, but the supplier paid Compass.
Yeah.
I've been down that road too many times. I can't begin to.
They just, he just said, we just, when our name goes out there, then people always come back to us. And he goes, and here's, here's a thing with that. There could be a beverage company without saying names that would like to provide beverages at locations for.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great, like water.
Pepsi Cola.
But, but it competes with the food trucks though. Right, so there's, so, but, you know, again, if you can put barrels out with water and some soft drinks and stuff, some Monster Energy or.
Coca-Cola.
Coke, something, whatever. So that could, that could be in play. They may donate a lot. I don't know yet. I'm still having that discussion.
I think I updated all the rest of yours unless there's something new since you stopped in.
Yeah, and I'm just waiting for, again, um, just people to say, we're gonna do it and, and checks.
Wait, are you moving mortgage, Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay. So unless there's any changes, I didn't have Joe's, so that's the only thing I didn't have. So then we have three thousand dollars that has come in. There's fourteen thousand five hundred committed currently, plus the Polinos unknown.
And Jamie's unknown.
And Jamie's unknown. So right now we're looking at a total of four, or a total of sixteen thousand, let's see, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen. Seventeen thousand five hundred. That should be total coming in, plus the Polinos and Jamie.
Now, this isn't, it's not a 501(c)(3), is it though?
No. Still a donation. No, it's still a donation on your side.
I know, but if it comes from a charitable, it has to go to a 501(c)(3). That's the difference. But there's ways to get around that.
There's always a way around it. Yes. Is he coming?
All right, so continue to.
Hunter.
Give your information to.
Can you come out here? It's your turn.
What's his turn?
She would like him to update on. We are with his sponsor people, because I'm gonna do the same thing to council.
What's that?
He can get that information, Jamie.
Yeah, I'm thinking he hasn't done it yet, so I wanna be like, go do it. All right, who have you talked to?
I've reached out to Tammy Lee. She is the lease representative, the lease management person for Marvin Gardens.
Yep.
To get basically all the direct contact information for all the leases.
Yeah.
Um, we've applied full tag. So hopefully I should have that information today and I'll be reaching out to all them. And I'll talk to, I mean, we just gotta figure out with John's home, I mean, whoever else we want, I mean.
Okay. Well, what does John Simpson wanna do?
I mean, Ben just said to reach out to their office. I don't know how much they wanna do.
All right. Did you, did you send him the paper?
No, I can do that today.
Send everybody the paper.
Okay.
Who you got? You got it.
Christina also has wanted me to, she sent this to me like Thursday, the destination by design, we did our part, or our master plan, to just send me the form to.
Yep.
So I've got that contact, so I'm working on a lot today.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
No. Get her done.
I will. That's my plan today.
Thanks, Hunter. Okay. T-shirts and logos.
Not my monkey, not my service.
Okay, you can leave. Bye.
No, I got, I'll talk to Jamie.
Christina has, Christina's gotten three quotes. If you'll flip over to the paper, it has Lind Pro at the top.
Yep.
There's a summary of the costs.
So if we have five hundred and fifty-one, plus it's five thirty-seven. A unit? Am I reading that right?
Uh, for Lind Pro, yeah.
Okay.
Gretchen, can you help me decipher through this?
The first column is a summary. Here is the summary of all three quotes.
Wait, where's the summary of all three quotes?
Um, on the Lind Pro page on that.
Oh, I got it. I got it. Yep, yep, yep.
Sorry, it's kind of small.
Six ninety-five. Lind Pro is.
Are these all a hundred percent cotton?
Yeah, so all quotes are a hundred percent cotton, short sleeve t-shirts, all have six color logo on the front and single color. Front, left, chest and single color.
So Lind Pro is by far the cheapest. Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes.
Is that what I see? I mean, even if we only get a hundred shirts, it's still by far the cheapest.
Their price starts at five eighty-nine.
Yep.
The real starts at eight ninety-five.
Logo Pros is fifteen fifty. Yeah, or seven ninety-five. The fifteen fifty would be the volunteer shirts and then the other ones would be seven ninety-five. So Lind Pro is by far the cheapest.
Um, I think there was also a chance when we talked to the marketing guy, he also has a lot of options for that kind of stuff, so we could potentially get one more quote from him. Um, just because he's such a large pool.
Let's do that.
What are their lead times to get all the sponsors on their shirts? Do you know?
Say that again?
What are the lead times that they need? So we get a sponsor, like a silver sponsor, you get your name on a t-shirt is what I'm told. That's what it says. So what is their lead time to get in? Because that drives.
Yeah. When May first, and then we have it by May twenty-first? Is it April first? Is it, what's the day? How long do they need?
To print. Are you saying to get from final answer to printing?
Yes.
Um, I don't have an answer to that. I guess that's a Christina question, what she talked to.
And then is, would they, would they accept, um, the business logos? If the business provides a logo and they want their logo versus their name or something, or that included. Is that something that they can accommodate? Meaning that usually you can send something, an email, they take it, capture it and put it on the shirt. That's their logo. So do they have those capabilities? Other than just the name printed and stuff, they may have their own, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, totally, yeah.
Are you saying, so you're saying logos versus just like a printed list of vendors?
Yeah, like with Union Power Cooperative does stuff.
Twenty logos on the back of a shirt and it says Marvin Day two thousand twenty-one and on the back is however many sponsors they qualify for the t-shirt.
With their logos.
With their logo.
So as we're getting sponsors, we should probably be saying, please send your logo.
Yeah.
And that way, and we have a place on the V-Jod where we're storing that information.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
And Joe, depending on whether you're platinum silver, your logo will show up accordingly, correct?
Yeah.
I think that's.
Platinum, silver.
Platinum gold.
Gold, silver.
But that, that goes into, I think there were big banners for platinum and stuff like that, where they're not.
I don't know. I'm not worried about that right now. We'll just, we'll talk.
I'm just saying, it's just, if you're platinum or gold, we need to be acquiring a logo.
Yes.
Silver, let's see where we're at.
Now, we need to know because what's the, what's the sponsorship letter say?
It does say that in there.
It does. What does the sponsor, what you got?
I have it.
What does it say? So.
Silver is t-shirt logos.
Yep.
Uh, display a business.
Gold is t-shirt logos.
It's also on.
They're all t-shirt logos.
Website, flyer, social media.
They're all t-shirt logos.
Yeah. Oh, they are, yeah. So you're bronze.
Yeah.
So you get five hundred dollars, you get your, your name out there.
But it's gonna go on the t-shirt. It's gonna go Vegas.
Yeah, they'll get smaller as they go on.
Correct. That would be the idea.
Yeah. So I think Lind Pro sounds great, but I think we need to get some additional information from Lind Pro. Lead time.
Yeah.
Logo, like, are they good with each individual company having their own logo and we cut, and we're gonna have to like lay it out for them.
And what's the drop dead date? And if that company doesn't get us their logo in time, they'll just get their name on there. And that's it. And that's all we can commit to.
And then how, how does that company need the logo? Cause somebody keeps saying like, not like a JPG.
Like a vector file or a.
Like a vector file. I keep hearing.
Vectors are always better. Vector files are always better.
Embroidery, like, those are different, that's a completely different file.
But somebody keeps saying, I think it was a vector file.
Was for the marketing.
Fine, ask those, ask Lind, I mean, Lind Pro looks like the one we're gonna go with because it's gonna be the cheapest, but I would ask them how they want the logo. Like a JPG or a vector file, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, whatever they, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. Okay. And I think we, I mean, I think Lind Pro is the cheapest, so that's what we're gonna go with, right?
So.
That's what I have to do.
Just so you guys know, if we're only doing a hundred shirts, twenty-five go to the platinum members based on what these rules say.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to do more than a hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, but again, we need drop dead date of when we need to order, so that we will, we can just cut off sponsors like.
What's the sponsor deadline? It was March?
It was, it was December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, so. I said we're gonna continue to take money as long as. Until, until we know when. Until the t-shirt deadline. Yeah, basically. Or even after, you're just not gonna be on the t-shirt. Yeah.
You still have that information I got as a gift for.
Can you, on that sponsor request form, can you take off that deadline date on the form?
Gave me ability to free advertisement. I think I gave it to you.
Is it still on the bottom?
I looked at it and it said we had to use it within a month of receipt. So it might be expired. We can try to talk to them, see if they'll work with us.
If they turn it down, it's not good business for them.
Are we gonna sell them or give them away?
What?
T-shirts.
I'm not sure yet. All right, let's put a, can we put a pin in that? Cause we don't know how many we need to order yet.
Minimum cost is where we're at, five hundred and ten dollars. Six hundred bucks for five, for a hundred. Yeah, we get enough sponsors, we can give them out.
Yeah, so let's put, let's put a pin in that and see.
Okay.
All right. Marketing and advertising.
Christina's not here.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, but I had, where's my, I had notes. I had notes. Okay. Vendor setup schedule, sponsors, okay, so sponsors promotional material balloons. This was my thing. So with the marketing and advertising, um, what I was thinking was, and I talked to Christina Amos about this briefly. So Chad Johnson Orthodontics is, is gonna be a silver sponsor. So we need to have, which I love this, the pictures aren't right, but I love this. But I think for like Chad Johnson Orthodontics, you have, you add up here, Chad Johnson Orthodontics silver sponsor of, and then you have this and you give Chad Johnson a boatload of these to leave in their office. Valentine Pediatric Dentistry is a silver sponsor. And you, you make up individual ones for whoever the sponsor is. And if it's a business that people come into, we give them flyers. So that they can hand out and advertise to their customers. So it's a great advertisement for them, it's a great advertisement for us. Like Thomas Pest Control, they probably don't have anybody that walks into their office, but we can still give them some. Then they can have their technicians drop them off, like when they're doing stuff, if they want that. But I say, like whoever our sponsors are, if they have, and if they want it, we do individualize, and it can't be that hard.
Paste. Yep.
It's cut and paste. It cannot be that hard to add like something at the top and like we can do it.
Right.
And then, and then we'll have that for each, each of our sponsors specifically. And then we will also have blanket ones for like Publix, that we just have them at Publix. But if Publix decides to be a sponsor, then they could, you know, have their own. But I'm just, you know, or at the element, or this flyer is what I will send.
To the kids.
To the elementary, to Marvin Elementary School, to the middle school to advertise that I know that the PTSO and PTA will put in their, their stuff.
Goes home with the kids.
Yep. That's, that's what I'm looking at. But vendor setup schedule, you got that question answered that we were talking about, right? Right there. Vendor setup schedule. This is on our thing. Yeah, you got it. Six eight. Yeah.
Switch gears for me. I'm sorry, I did. I was going over our thing that we had talked about.
Okay. So then, marketing, promotional, who's, sorry, go Gretchen, sorry. I just wanted to get that out.
Yeah, no, we've got the press release done. I forgot to add that to the sheet, so we can start sending that out as long as you guys approve of it. And so the, what I'm running across when I'm looking at places to advertise is there are plenty of free places we can just add to events calendars, which is fine. We just need to submit the information. And very similar to what's on the press release, we can just add it to the event day. And we need to be able to link the website. We need to figure out whatever details we're gonna have on the Marvin page. So that we can direct them to more detailed information. So we need to get that up before we actually start sending that stuff out.
My next question was, how do we get it on the website?
I have to create the page and I can, that hyperlink will probably not be accurate.
No, it was just a.
Yeah, I can, I can create it. That's not a problem. I just need the stuff to go on it.
Yeah, the only thing, and this is just a little thing, is I would draw antique car show. It's not an antique car show. It could be the ladies' greatest cars that are brand new and stuff. So we're not, we're not only antique, you have antique.
So it wouldn't be a walk back in time.
Yeah, and I wouldn't do walk back in time.
Marvin's Gardens and Trails. Also need to remove, is it a free event or are we charging? I thought we.
Four.
I thought we said free out. It says, and hosting a free event. What, did you already look at this? Yeah. Oh, okay.
I would just take the word.
Way out.
Cause we might be charging for individual.
What do you mean it's not edited?
It's not being free.
What? What do you mean it's not edited? You said, I thought we took the word free out. I said, I didn't do this. I know. Okay. So I said it wasn't edited. Christina did. I changed it up too.
Right. But car shows aren't antique. They're just, they're, it's open to anyone.
Also.
You also have two different font sizes there.
Yeah, there's two different font sizes.
Maybe you'd like to, we should just say, stop by Marvin.
Yeah.
Now, maybe you'd like, you're telling people to stop by.
Stop by, okay, so to start with, that's into the stop by. There needs to be a comma after Union County.
We need to highlight the concert too. Concert and fireworks.
Oh, this is definitely not the one that I marked up because I capitalized.
Did you guys change the file name on it?
I don't know if Christina saved it. I, we were emailing back and forth.
You might not have gotten it yet.
Cause I definitely took out, I was like, I know I took out free and I know I capitalized some stuff and I.
We'll take out antique.
Hold on, we'll just wait till we get it from Christina. Because I, I, hold on.
Why don't you and I and Christina meet and make sure everything's good?
She's out, she's out for the next few days.
I know, but when's this press thing go on?
Whatever, it's not.
Well, the, the hyperlink needs to be done first, so that's a very, that needs to be done like ASAP.
Well, I have to have everything on the page where I create the page.
Well, can we create the page and just add maybe the front of the flyer? We don't have to add details.
Anything, I can add anything you give me. I can add anything you give me.
I know, but can't you just go ahead and add the page without?
It'll just be a blank page.
That's fine. But go ahead and, go ahead and like build it so you can start adding stuff to.
Coming soon.
Yeah, coming soon.
That's fine.
I'm listening to you, Jamie. I can see pointing at me.
All right. Marvin Day.
Hold on, wait, wait. We're not, definitely not, we're marketing. I'll come, I'll, I'll, I'll find that press release, Gretchen.
No, I know.
Well, I'll go look for it again. Maybe it was.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Who's reaching out to W F N G?
I don't know.
Spectral.
I think. Also, I removed her name off of that when you edited.
I may want another contact.
Yeah, I said remove her name off of that.
I'm sure that's all changed. This was all just kind of like a.
Platform.
Yes, yes.
So it's just a matter of plugging in the right verbiage.
All right, flyer. I think the owl should be moved down to where May twenty-first is and we use the rap logo with the.
Say a rap?
Yeah, the one with the D on it.
The one with the D.
Do we have a picture?
I don't think we got those.
I think I only got a vector file, I guess.
What?
The only file we got.
What are you talking about? What pictures? We didn't get those.
We only got this one.
Can you, Jamie, can you print this one?
Okay, so when you get that on Christina.
I think, are you logged in?
What?
Can you print from that laptop?
No, this is my personal laptop. It isn't.
Yeah, I can't print from this either.
All right.
If I send this to somebody, can somebody print this out? Yeah, send it to Gretchen. Gretchen, what's your email here?
Tax.
Tax. Tax what? It's not.
Marvin, it's not good.
Okay, sorry. It's not auto-populated. There it is. Now it is.
We just sent it to her. We just sent it to her, I can have it.
Okay.
Okay.
Derek, what would you suggest on that?
Yeah, like we, we took out history buffs and car show gurus, like that's what we have now.
What are you, what's she printing for you, Kim?
The press release that I changed, that Christina and I both changed, a bunch of stuff too. There it is.
If you're emailing stuff, can you copy me on the emails?
Christina sent it to me, like she wanted me to look at it.
Okay. I'm sure she sent it, it just got confused.
Alright, what do you guys think about the flyer?
Okay, what you said was, you think this needs moved, but then you were looking in that binder for another logo, but I can't see that.
Alright, so.
How, where the, somebody said something about the owl.
Yeah, that's what, we don't have this.
You should have it from a previous meeting, you've seen this logo?
That's the one you guys selected.
We don't carry that around. It needs to say, it needs to, the whole logo needs to be, he needs to have a whole logo on him. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I wanna move him down here. And, and use the date, how it's wrapped underneath him.
Oh, okay.
I, I think he gets lost up here.
He does, there's a lot going on up there.
Yeah, I wanna pull him down there and.
Oh, is this ha- instead of having May twenty first, have it wrapped around like it has like that, I think that's good.
Kim, Kim, well, ours, the date's one of the most important things, though.
Yeah, I think we.
Versus pictures.
I agree. I, this, okay, so the pic, these pictures are not the pictures that Christina asked the guy to put in there, he wasn't, he didn't listen. I think.
No, he did, and then, and then we made comments because. His, these, these all came from me.
Yeah.
They, they were changed after he put in, so I just threw in some stock photos for. Reference to whatever, you know, type of stuff we're looking to do.
Okay.
But, comment away.
I think Marvin Day needs to be at the top.
I agree.
Um, because the picture, like, it's like, well, what the hell is this? Marvin Day needs to be at the top.
With May twenty first on it.
Well, it's gonna have it wrapped around, I mean, we can have it in addition to.
But how big is May twenty first on there?
Well, it's small here, but we can talk to him about. Removing the Marvin Day and just putting the date much bigger around there, so we can, we can get him to showcase the date. And get him to make the adjustments on that.
The date's the most important thing, I hope.
Correct, yeah. And then I like this, I think. They got rid of whatever that one thing was, plant, whatever.
The garden walker, whatever.
Whatever it was, I was like, what? I don't know what fireworks and more is, just more.
There's a lot more, there's more.
More surprises. Okay.
Get rid of the and and just put it in the back.
No, I'm fine with that, I got you, I got, I'm picking up what you're putting down. But I would, I, yeah, I would move it, I would.
Would you keep it the same color, Kim? With all those different, it, it looks like it's just lost in there with all these other.
High toes.
It's fireworks, though.
No, no, I understand that, but when you look at it with everything else, it, it just, you lose.
We, we understand it's fireworks.
Okay. There was. And, and that's not the press release, I don't think, cause it says gurus and stuff on it, by the way.
This one says.
Car show gurus, that's what you wanted?
Yeah.
Oh.
Car show gurus, where'd you come up with that?
I don't know, Cr- Christina and I both, this was a mashup of.
When's the last time you've been to a car show?
I've never been to a car.
Guru, guru?
I don't know, what do you call them?
History buffs and car show gurus.
What's that?
We have, Marvin Day will have events for our history buffs and car co- car show gurus.
Hobbyists.
Enthusiasts.
Okay, car show enthusiasts.
How about that?
And then Gretchen, it's.
Pause that.
You gotta remove the.
Don't be a.
Apostrophe on the first line.
Jerk.
Hey, I told you, he told me the lob, not. No problem, it's a lob, lob.
We can do it for, we can do the press release internally.
Too bad they're not visual.
Okay, I.
Alright, so logo.
There, I like.
Mascot, top left with the date. Marvin Day. At the top.
Marvin Day at the top.
Okay.
I would say, pictures.
What if the pictures went at the bottom and then the, the block of words went in the middle?
See, I think, I think the pictures in the middle would be better, and then the words, and then the logo with the date, like at the bottom, like corner, but big.
I like that.
And then, there were, do you have the other, Derek, you ha- do you have the other three? I mean, I know this is the one that was kind of the mashup of the three options that they sent. There was, there were two other colors that they had, that Marvin Day was just. I think just.
Green?
Solid colors, no, they, it wasn't green, I feel like it was yellow and something else.
It was yellow and blue, it was, it was, it was taken very similar from what we took out of here.
So those, those I thought looked really nice, like it was clean, and I think if we've got all of these colors. Then that's a lot of extra colors and it doesn't look good with the yellow owl, so I think either the yellow or the blue Marvin Day. At the top would probably be better.
More bold, yellow gets lost.
Okay, blue?
Blue or green, green is, what, were you, kinda green, or? Recycle, all that kinda stuff.
I don't even remember what you're talking about.
We're green, green friendly.
Green and yellow, I know with the yellow, that's yellow.
Yellow, I can't see that date from here, I, it may turn, I can't see yellow. On, yellow against white is not a contrast enough. You gotta go with a bolder contrast, if you wanna get whatever message you wanna get out.
You wanna go green?
Anything that's more of a contrast.
Do you wanna do two, do you wanna do Marvin in one color and Day in a different color? Or do you wanna do them the same color?
You can, you can do them same color.
Okay, same color.
Well, that's busy.
Okay, so Marvin Day at the top.
Yep.
Pictures in the middle.
Yep.
Words and date with the logo big in the corner.
Anything but yellow against the white.
Okay, well, and I think this is not a very, this is not a very bold yellow, and it looks like the ink started to run out, but I get your point. So can we move all this stuff around for Tuesday, and then PRG can look at it again on Tuesday?
Yep, I will email him today.
And then, and then.
I may get to use my marketing.
And then hopefully have, oh my God, that was so long ago, it was hard to even have colleges back then. Um. And then Park, Second Greenway can look at this and give thumbs up, thumbs down, and then council can approve it hopefully at the February eighth meeting, and then. We can start sending it out and getting it out and putting it on the website. I thought you wanted to talk to Jamie.
I told him he can call me later.
Okay.
Bye all, thank you for buying me to attend and opine.
Okay.
Bye Joe.
Always opining. Okay, who, okay, are we good with the flyer?
Did you, did you like the pictures?
Just take a look at it.
I, I don't like, um. I think the difference, I think they need to be different sized.
Well, and if we're, the car show is one of the biggest events, we need to send our cars.
I agree.
Okay.
I would take out. I think. I'm not sure people know what that is.
What?
The pottery.
Well, I think Derek did a good, I mean, he, he selected pictures that reinforce, I think, what we're trying to do.
No, I agree, I know we do cars.
Well, we can, but I think we need to make sure as we think through this. That we have, it's not real busy. And it doesn't take the eye away from what we're really trying to say.
I think this will be less busy, and especially up here, cause all this color right here is a lot.
And we're doing away with fireworks here.
One of the things Derek mentioned in our notes that we hadn't discussed yet is maybe instead of putting fireworks in it, we use. The, the pictures to put inside the letters to showcase the events inside Marvin, and that way we can get rid of these.
Yeah.
And get rid of those.
I think it's been a real busy.
Plus, I'm saying if you get rid of those and then all you have is basically.
I think do solid color, and then maybe make the pictures a little bit smaller, and we gotta, I, I think make the horse smaller and put, add cars. And maybe make the flowers smaller.
Flowers need to be a lot smaller.
Okay. And then just kinda see how it looks.
And then PRG will look at what we're telling there.
We'll look at it, we'll look at it next week.
For further discussion.
Yeah, and then we can dish it up some more.
So y'all have a meeting next Tuesday?
Hold on, hold on. They have it, yes, it is next Tuesday, okay. Oh Lord, it is next Tuesday.
This is why you shouldn't take it.
Austin, you gotta be having a great time.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
Run.
Okay, so you guys are gonna work on this from this one?
I'm.
Or Gretchen, you're gonna work on this from this one?
He said he'll handle it in front of me.
In the booth, okay, alright. Alright, what else we got marketing wise?
Um, I have a full list of places, one thing I'm finding when it comes to actually, um, ads in, um. Magazines and stuff is like, the first one that I came across was Axios is three hundred dollars just to drop an ad in there, and. Talking with Daniel, um, when we met about the marketing, since he, this is what he does for living, he was saying that. Marketing with banners out publicly, like on streets and like on the main roads or whatever, too soon, it, you turn, you eventually turn a blind eye to it and people forget about, and they. Stop looking, so we don't want the banners up until three weeks from the event.
At the beginning of the magazine.
Yeah. Um, and then. And then, um, Marky, we can send a press release every month, we just have to schedule them, we can change the topic, we can change, or we could start out with a. Um, this one kinda just showcases, hey, this is a big event, next month it'll be, hey, come to the car show, month of, you know, like every. Like we can like kind of spot that, or on social media and different places like that, there's all sorts of. Places that we can do that, but we just need to be able to link them back to the website for a full list of events.
Okay. Um, what about, um, oh, and I love the idea of just getting it like on like.
Event calendars.
Yeah, the event calendars, it kind of just.
And so there's plenty of those, Charlotte on the cheap, there's, um. Back to the magazines and different, so there's all sorts of places for events calendars.
Perfect, and then news stations, like, I mean, I think we need to call people and have like Joe give an interview, or Jamie give an interview, or.
And so, we talked to a lady who is no longer in the news, but she was giving us some information about. How they, we can schedule them and talk to their press desks and say, hey, we have this event going on. They will come cover it the day of, assuming there's not some emergency or something, like they will put it on their calendar. Um, so there's different ways to get that, we, we can't guarantee someone will pick up the story. Um, we can only say, hey, we'd love for you to come to do a story, um, this is, you know, local events and stuff like that, so all we can do is. Provide the information and keep kind of.
I think that's good, I think we need to do that, and start, just find out like how we, how we do that, how early we need to do that, like when, like. When we need to like start reaching out to them.
Gretchen, have we reached out to Valentine Magazine?
I haven't reached out to people yet, cause when I've been doing my research, it is literally, hey, you submit this, we don't need to talk to them, they just have a. Where you submit, if you wanna advertise, you pay for it.
No, I don't wanna advertise.
But I want them to do a story.
I want a story, and.
Like Valentine Magazine, the one I saw.
Well, have Joe do quotes or talk about the history of Marvin.
I know the guy that does, does that, who owns it, George Zarilla.
Okay.
So I can reach out to George and say, how can you do a story?
Yeah, want the deadline date for us to get the copy to him?
I'll, I'll take care of it.
Because we need to go beyond Marvin with this, and big, Valentine's a way to do that, I'd really, uh, I don't know if Charlotte Magazine would consider it. But I, I wouldn't be hesitant to call them either. Or just say, you know, this is a big celebration in Union County, a lot of people may come down for it.
And then Austin, can you get up with your Waxaw mag, sports magazine guy, cause he's been wanting to do something with Marvin?
I got it.
You got him?
You already got him?
Okay, I would, let's, let's get a story in. For the, for the April?
Yeah.
Edition?
I'll call George today and see.
Well, it'd be the April edition, hopefully, but I don't know if we'll make that deadline.
Well, it's not quite February yet, yeah, so I would, I would say April.
Augusta's, um, April deadline will be the end of February, so.
Who's that?
Is that Gus Sander Meyer? He's a Waxaw.
So let's, let's get up with him and, and try to get something done for him.
And I'll do the one Valentine, George.
Perfect. Um. QR code event info website, that's you, Austin.
This is making QR code, just once we have a webpage, use the URL and search by that.
So we have a QR code, it's just not active.
I'm not aware of any of that.
I found that in the V drive the other day, it's even got.
That QR code, so that's, so the way a QR code works is gonna link to a certain page, I don't know what that links to, but.
It doesn't link to anything right now, we just need to maybe re.
We, what I mean is you can make one online in five minutes, we need to make another one, that was probably used for something in the past, I guess, and we forgot about.
Okay, price out promotional items, I know you're working on discs, Derek, I know you've already got that taken care of, do we want water bottles and stuff?
I mean, you'll tell me.
I don't think, I don't think we need all that, we're gonna have T-shirts, and we're gonna have discs that we're giving away for people to play with. I think that's enough. Maybe next year we'll do water bottles. And then, and then we find something you can donate them and put their name on it. Okay, uh, final flyer, that's Christina, decide on mailers or not, I don't know whether we do mailers, I mean, I'd like to do those, but that's gonna be expensive.
Well, I'd like to talk about the H O A president, I still think they're a key mechanism.
You're having meetings.
Is that, but we got a meeting with them, don't we?
Correct.
Do we?
When, when is that? Uh, February twenty second.
Okay, May twenty second. February.
So, but I think at that meeting. Is, is to see if we can get buy-in, that they distribute flyers to all of, a hard flyer to everybody.
Woo. You think everyone did it?
I think some of them will, I know we would, I mean.
Our neighborhood used to send out email blasts to people.
And, and also email blasts, I just think.
It's incumbent upon them to do that.
I was gonna say, you're, you know, they're a big piece, I believe, of our community.
Sure.
And I don't understand why, like our little HOA couldn't go mailbox to mailbox and put out flyers and say Marvin Day.
I mean, they could, you gotta get, you gotta get them to buy in.
Well, we can ask them, and, and, they won't do it if we don't ask. So, I, I suggest whoever's from the town.
Well, we have our annual meeting tonight, and I'll be there, so I'll, I'll make sure to say, okay, folks. Public announcement.
Yeah, and just see if, see what's buying, but I, I think that's proven.
Your problem, Jamie, is your HOA president doesn't live in North Carolina, so you have a problem getting her on board.
That's a conversation I'll have, that's, that's a conversation I'll have with her.
Yeah.
Is it?
Because.
Christina has.
It goes both ways.
I know, I'm just saying, cause I sent out multiple emails to her about stuff, and she just serving it to nobody.
Well, that happens, unfortunately, with a lot of these HOAs, that's the reason we're trying to reinstate HOA presidents meeting.
Alright, so, we're gonna try the HOAs.
Yeah.
Now, that, that, I looked up on February twenty second, there's a PRG meeting, is that with, specifically with the HOA president?
No, the HOA president's meeting is in the evening at six thirty.
We have a work session with you guys.
Yeah.
Alright, hang on one second, and so. February twenty second.
There's also a coffee at council in the new village hall at the same time.
Right.
So they're, we're just gonna be in different rooms, HOAs will be in one room, coffee council be in another room.
We're gonna table food trucks.
Okay. Okay. If no one's there, I can go into the other one or I can switch out, cause I wanna make sure.
Tuesday, cause Dan's not
Who do I have that with?
I had to look.
Download that information.
I had to look.
He's very concerned about that.
Who is? You think he's still concerned about it?
He, he said he was.
I don't know.
Because of
We didn't make a decision.
Well, it was so hard to, you know, it's, you know, it's hard to do that.
No, I know, but he's concerned because he doesn't think that other people will
Well, that, that his vendors will be wanting to come. So we may have to change vendors for food.
Maybe I'll switch with Bob. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm interrupted. Go ahead.
I don't have coffee with council that night, so I can, I can do it.
I know, but I, I wanna be there as well. So I'll see if I can switch out with Bob. So you and I can be at that HOA meeting.
I know, but, oh, okay, you want me at the HOA meeting.
It's, they're both gonna be at village hall, just in different rooms.
Okay.
Coffee council might be in the, be in the conference room and then we'll have, we'll have the HOAs up in the chambers.
What time is that, Austin? Six?
Always six.
Okay. No, not coffee with council, the president's club, six. Six, okay. Okay, all right.
Well, let me double, let me double check, see what he put in our calendars. I think he put six.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Yeah, it's six.
Okay, um, yeah, I think we table, I think, yeah, I think we just do food trucks on Tuesday. Yes, that day. Um, okay, and then I think this is not, I think that is
No, I think it's just a placeholder.
Okay.
I think once we actually have a schedule, um, this was just kind of like a tentative schedule, but I think that eventually, um, it will show that different locations, like food trucks will no longer be there because food trucks will be listed under specific locations.
Got it. So it'll be like Marvin Elementary School and then it, under that it'll have the times of what it's going on and then it'll have park and what's going on.
Yeah, so we can, we can kinda design. That was just kind of like
No, no, that's good.
Suggested map here, but we need to get, once it's ironed down, then that can be created.
Okay, um, I have Okay, I don't have anything else for marketing. But I have a question for Bob. Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
Is Marsh gonna set up anything?
We weren't planning.
Okay. I thought about that and I was like, oh, I wonder if Marsh wants to set up a table or promote like
Marsh, we'd love to set up in the barn with the Raptors.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I think, I think at that point you guys are gonna have a schedule of all of your speaker series, probably.
We've already got that.
So, I mean, I would say set up a table, have Paige and
Why don't you present the Raptors center?
Oh, Marsh presents? That's a good idea.
That is a good idea.
That is a good idea. Talk to Marsh about it. See, see what you
I don't have to talk to Marsh.
Oh, you're gonna make that decision?
See if we can Do it with Marsh.
Bob is Marsh. Okay, I was just thinking like, that would be like great advertisement for Marsh and the speaker series and you know, get that information out to continue, you know, and hopefully, again, hopefully there will be a lot of people there that, you know, you can get more people involved in Marsh.
No, that'd be great.
Okay.
Good idea.
I occasionally have that.
Good idea.
Okay, that's all I got.
Good job.
Dirk, do we have new business? I guess we can't finish our meeting. We need to adjourn it though.
You, okay, so you can continue to talk, but there's no quorum, so no, no voting can take place.
Okay, so we just, well, we weren't gonna vote on anything.
We cannot update people's, well, I can do it, PRG.
Just do it in board member comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'll just do it next week.
Yeah.
I'm done. We got nothing else. I'm done with you people.
We all have our walking orders for action items. We'll, we'll just keep those on the sheets. Um The list, you have the, you have the ongoing list, Kim?
No, I don't, I don't.
It's on the app.
Oh.
It's an attachment. You can go through it if you want.
No, I really don't want to.
We can skip it.
I say skip it and turn it off. Is it on my list? Oh, it is on my list.
Do you like having it on there?
Nobody knows any day. Nobody's here.